We would like to call to order the Tuesday, December of the 6th, 2022, School Board Meeting for Lynchburg City Schools, Lynchburg City School Board. And we are delighted to have each of you here tonight. And as I call the meeting to order, I do want to acknowledge that School Board Member Sinha will not be with us tonight. She is en route back from lecturing at a major conference, and I'm looking forward to hearing the results from her regarding that. All of us are here tonight, and as we move to Section B, the Agenda Approval, all of us have had the agenda and has been featured appropriately for us to review. Is there a motion tonight to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Still moved. A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. School Board Member Preston and Dr. Carter. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
School Board Member, Ms. Preston?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Charles?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
And School Board Member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We're so thankful for our country and all that is going on constructively, and certainly public education is one of those things, and we are thankful for this great responsibility that we have. School Board Members, as is our custom, we operate our meetings with our norms and protocols and procedures, and with that level of understanding, we have a good agenda before us tonight, and we want to move through that at this time. In Section C, we have our public comments, as I am looking at it, and tonight we have two persons for public comments. And persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures, and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to their official duties, engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or addresses the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the school board. Individual speakers should limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group should limit their comments to five minutes, and the representative shall identify the group at the beginning of their presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. The total allotted time for public comments at school board meetings is thirty minutes. Public comments are reserved for the public to provide input. The board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in discussion at this time. Having said that, we have two wonderful persons to share with us tonight, first being Cindy Baath, and she is going to be talking to us from the Virtual Academy in relationship to introduction of PTO. Cindy, welcome.
Hi there. Good evening, members of the Lynchburg City School Board. We are here tonight on behalf of the newly-formed LCS Virtual Academy PTO. We are so excited to establish this organization to support the efforts that you all, the LCS Administration, and the Virtual Academy staff have put forth to make this virtual program a success for the students in our community. As you are all aware, the LCS Virtual Academy was established in 2021 after the pandemic showcased the enormous need and potential for virtual public education in Lynchburg City Schools. While our program did directly follow the pandemic, we know you and the LCS Administration fully understand that it is not simply because of the pandemic that virtual learning is an important alternative to in-person learning. Our PTO on behalf of the many diverse Trailblazer families from every corner of Lynchburg thanks you for your support. Our families choose virtual learning for their children for a variety of reasons. We understand the value of both in-person and virtual instruction, and know one way is better than the other. Having the virtual option is simply just another way LCS fulfills its mission of every child by name and by need to graduation. In fact, many of our families have students in both virtual and in-person learning within LCS. We value our partnerships with the eleven elementary, three middle, and two high schools who support our students alongside our LVA teachers and staff. Our students are able to participate in many of their base school extracurricular activities. LCS base school resource teachers ensure our elementary students receive PE, art, and music classes each week. We are also extremely grateful for the additional staff that was granted to the Virtual Academy so that our high school students have core subject support with an LCS teacher. As the Virtual Academy PTO, we aim to provide additional support as well. While we are newly-established, we are beginning fundraising efforts to support Virtual Academy field trips and other monthly in-person activities for Virtual Academy students. We are also excited to show support for the hard-working staff with meals and other appreciation events throughout the year. We look forward to the continued support and success of this program. Thank you for joining us as Trailblazers in virtual learning in Lynchburg City Schools.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Starlene Jenkins, if I have it correct, and she is an individual who is going to talk to us about resources. Starlene Jenkins. All right, and the rest of these, I see names, but they have been scratched out, so, Madam Clerk, I'm of the assumption that we have no further in-person presenters. Is there anyone by voicemail or?
No, sir.
Or the other things that we said. Thank you so much. And again, we thank the public for your input in any of our school board meetings, and it's very helpful to us as we seek to make the best decision possible for kids. Section D is our student representative comments, and all of us look so forward to this part of our agenda. And so I'm going to ask Dr. Edwards to help us to appreciate the two very special groups that have come tonight.
Absolutely. So we're always so grateful for Kaylin and for Cameron and their leadership as a school board reps and being the big reps for my little reps out there. So we have started this year, guest student reps from all of the schools throughout the division, and we invite children from our elementary, middle, and other high school programs to come and just share with us information about their schools. And this is part to learn about their schools, but also we're developing young leaders, advocacy for themselves, and plus, they have important things to share with us. So we, as adults, need to listen to the children who we serve, and this is an opportunity to do that. So tonight, we have two schools with us in addition to our regular student reps. We have Paul Monroe and Sandusky, and we're going to start with Paul Monroe and Donna Bear, and we have several students from Paul Monroe, Zoe Childress, Miriam Klein, Matthew Devina, Lala, is it Lala? Lala Johnson, Hunter Morris, and Will Porter are the student reps. So I'm going to ask Ms. Bear to come up, and then I'm going to ask these very important people to come up and share with us.
Good evening. My name is Zoe Childress, and I'm here with my friend Miriam Klein. We are here to represent the fifth grade at Paul Monroe Elementary School. We have our fourth grade representatives here as well. Finally, we would love to acknowledge our tech team with Matthew Devina and Will Porter.
Good evening. My name is Miriam Klein. I am a fifth grader at Paul Monroe. One of our highlights is Girls on the Run. Girls on the Run was one of our after-school activities. Thirty girls joined the team, and some of the girls' moms were coaches. We learned about friendship and how to make new friends. We did a lesson each week and then ran for twenty to thirty minutes. The biggest activity that we did was raise money for a donation to a hospital, St. Jude's Children's Hospital. This year, we raised one thousand seven hundred dollars from one bake sale and a homemade treasure sale. Everyone on the team made something. We trained for a 5K, and at the end of the season, we ran the 5K with some of the other schools. At the race, they have some fun stations that you can go to. For example, they have a bracelet-making station and a spin-the-wheel station for entertainment. They also have a station for snacks. Another one of our highlights are field trips. The kindergarten students went on a field trip to the pumpkin patch on October 20th. They got to pick out a pumpkin to take home. In the first week of November, we, the fifth graders, went to the Mayor Museum of Art at Randolph College. We got to see many pieces from American artists and even pieces from Lynchburg. On December 2nd, we, the fifth graders, went on an all-day field trip to La Ray Caverns and the Frontier Culture Museum. We got to see old houses at the Frontier Culture Museum, and at La Ray Caverns, we got to learn about stalagmites and stalactites. On September 26th, the third graders had a field trip to the Thomas Jefferson Poplar Forest. They experienced colonial life through making bricks, quill pen writing, toward the house, and the students made marbles.
October 24th through the 28th, Paul Monroe Elementary had Spirit Week. Spirit Week was a week where all of the students dressed up or brought something to school to participate in fun challenges. The Spirit Days were Monday, when you would dress up as what you wanted to be when you go up; Tuesday, when you would wear your favorite sports team jersey; Wednesday, when you would wear as much tatty as possible; Thursday, the most magical day of all, you could dress up as any Disney character imaginable; Friday, a day where you dressed up as your favorite stuffed animal, or you could bring a small stuffed animal. Spirit Week was a great way to have some fun at school, and the kids really enjoyed
Hello, I'm Lala Johnson, and I'm in the fourth grade. In November, we had two main events. One of our events was Steam Night. Steam Night was a night where four hundred sixty-one people attended. Yes, you heard that correctly, four hundred sixty-one people. And we had an awesome night. Steam Night, families traveled around the world and built famous architectures such as the Eiffel Tower, Big Ben, and the Leaning Tower of Pisa. At every landmark, families got a stamp in their passport with a picture of the landmark. The landmarks had QR codes with voice recordings talking about the landmarks. All the landmarks, country flags, or QR codes, and QR codes were made by our students. Our fabulous PTO provided pizza dinner for everyone. We also celebrated our book fair during this week. Students and families could purchase items from the shop in the library. Most of the items were books, but there were pens and fun activities, too. Ms. Helm, our librarian, said it was a huge success.
Hi there. My name is Hunter Morris. I am also a fourth grader at Paul Monroe Elementary School. I would like to share a few new programs that we have. The first one is the G-Ods. G-Ods are cool books for grades K through 2 about the real world. Another awesome program is BFF, which sounds like Best Friends Forever, but it actually stands for Building Fact Fluency. During BFF is when we do math tasks, write about math, and play games. We also do three-act math tasks during that time. We also wanted to share some cool science experiments that we have been doing. Some of the pictures on the slideshow show electricity and force and motion. These are just a few things you will see as you walk around the building.
Wow.
We want to thank you, the school board, for allowing us to come tonight.
So don't go away, because I do have something for you. But I'd like to thank you, first of all, I don't know which smile was bigger, mine or Mrs. Bear's, right? There's nothing like a feeling of when your students are doing exactly what they have learned to do in school, and here they are doing it in front of us, and not one of them were nervous at all. Oh my goodness, they already have it on lock, so, kudos to you. And although you didn't know this, but next week, we're having our budget hearing, and we're getting budget priorities, so what I heard from my young people is it's important to celebrate physical activity with girls on the run, that field trips are an important part of our curriculum, not just the academics, but the out-of-school experiences. We love Spirit Day, so we have to break up that day sometimes and just have fun. We should be supporting STEM learning, reading learning, building fact fluency, and of course, they know way more about electricity, force, and motors and everything than I do. So I've heard your priorities, young people. We will make sure that as we build a budget, that we keep those things as considerations because you've already told us that they're important to you. So thank you, thank you for that. All right, from our elementary schools to our middle schools, we have Sandusky Middle School and Dr. Anitra Lee here with a Sandusky Middle School student rep in Kennedy Thomas.
Hi, my name is Kennedy Thomas, and I'm a sixth grader at Sandusky Middle School. When I first walked through the doors of Sandusky Middle School, I felt excited but a little nervous. I was worried about getting lost in such a big building, getting used to my locker and fitting in, but all of that changed once I realized that Sandusky Middle School is a friendly and fun place to learn and grow. Dr. Lee, my teachers, and others have helped me feel very welcome each and every day. They always greet me with a friendly smile and ask me how I'm doing. I feel comfortable asking them for help when needed. During the first week of school, I decided to try out for the volleyball team, and I made it. Being on the team helped me make new friends and learn new skills. I was worried at first about not having many classes with my old friends from Sandusky Elementary School, but I am enjoying getting to know new people in my middle school classes. I was also worried about making good grades. However, my teachers make learning fun. I was so happy when I received my first report card because I made straight A's. My family and I have really enjoyed attending the Sandusky Middle School family fun nights. We went to the movie night, trunk-or-treat, and the paint-and-cocoa night. It was fun spending time with other families at my school. Sandusky Middle is a very family-friendly place. Now I feel comfortable with Sandusky Middle, and I love it more than ever.
So Kennedy, I would like to say you are so very brave, because first of all, being a sixth grader, going into a new big school, and the fact that you told your story, do you know how many other sixth graders probably felt exactly like you do, and here you are? Or how many of those? Here you are telling your story. And again, what I heard you say, the first thing that I heard you say is you were worried and you were scared, but the importance of people, relationships, they made you comfortable, and then you didn't worry anymore. And we have to realize that if our kids are worried, they're not going to concentrate on academics. So again, as we build our budget, we're talking about social-emotional support, we're talking about building relationships, we're talking about the people, the teachers, the staff, the administrators, that make a big difference in a kid's life. But then you went on, and you joined the volleyball team, and you made it, so that's impressive, too, and the importance of having athletic opportunities for our middle school students. It's not always about winning, although we do like to win, too, but it's about teamwork, camaraderie, learning how to just do a sport, and recognize that you have skills and abilities as you develop. And finally, Kennedy, what I learned from you that we have to always consider in our budget, and sometimes we don't talk about this piece, is the other students that we have, the bigger ones, family, the importance of family. And I heard you say Sandusky is a family-friendly school, and that is what we want for all of our schools, all of our schools to be family-friendly schools. And I see lots of parents out here, sitting here with their children, and a lot of what we do, a lot of what you do as students, isn't possible if you don't have supportive family and community. So as we look to the future, what's next for LCS, and we build the budget, let us big people, as adults, remember what we heard from the young people today, because they are telling us what's important, what makes them successful. Why we have straight A's is more than just the math, the reading, the social studies. It's about the extracurricular, the relationships we have with teachers, the time that we take to get to know students. Those are also important as well. So thank you, thank you, thank you for joining us tonight. I do have special gifts for you all that I'd like to come and give you, and then we're going to take a picture of the stuff. With everybody, not just me. So we're going to ask you to come up to the center, but let me come out and give my gift. So come on, backup. Ready? Are you well? Hunter? Get everybody? Okay. If you guys would come up and, because it comes a big school, so go over here, be careful, and we're going to go right in the center, because the important people are in the center. And Miss Pugh? Great job. We will get up and get around. You guys squeeze in, and just all watch the corners. I know parents who want pictures, too, so we won't. Yeah, we won't. They don't want us in the picture. One, two, three, say "School is fun."
School is fun.
I love those big smiles. We're going to let Miss Pugh back away. You guys stay put, because this is a refrigerator moment on Old School or Facebook. Okay, all right. Thank you. and the proud principal and students, thank you for sharing with us tonight. We really appreciate it. You're more than welcome. We're the better because of your sharing. All right, we're going to now go to our superstars at the high school level, and we'll start with Kaylin and move to Cameron.
Hey, hello. Good evening. Excited to share with everyone what's been going on at Heritage for the past month, a lot of exciting things from all different areas of the school. First off, our football team. The HHS football team has claimed the Region IIIC title and won their state semi. They won their state semifinal game against Christiansburg, forty-three to zero. In the weeks leading up to the semifinals, Heritage defeated Stanton, Brookville, and LCA. The Pioneers will play Phoebus for the Class 3 State Championship on Saturday, December 10th, at 12:00 PM at Liberty University. We had some school spirit going on from our leadership class. We had a bunch of these posters in the hallway. All were very motivational. And we have something else going on for our state game right now where they actually made little handprints with paper and wrote players' numbers on them. So it's like, we can give them high fives in the hallway. It's very sweet. Our track team has also been competing very well. This past weekend, senior Jalen Arnold won the girl's shot put with a throw of thirty-six to four. The Heritage Track Team is also raising money for their program. Donations will go toward equipment for them, travel expenses, and uniforms. And Coach Webb has more information if anyone is interested. Pioneer Theater's competition team was the runner-up at their district competition on November 5th and advanced to regionals. Salem Dews and Atlas Salazar both won Best Actor Awards. And this is really exciting that two people from our school won. Normally, they try to disperse it amongst the schools, but we were very proud of both of them. On November 4th, third grade students from Heritage Elementary came to the high school to watch a special performance of The Legend of Sleepy Hollow. And I can speak on this personally because I'm in Pioneer Theater, but they really enjoyed it. They got to ask us questions afterwards and they were all very engaged the whole time. And a lot of them talked about, you know, how they would want to do something like that in the future. And they wrote us cards and talked to us about that. So that was a very exciting way to engage them with what they can have when they get to the high school. Thanking to the EC Glass, DROTC, for hosting this year's Military Ball. It was held at the aviary. As you can see, there was a lot of pioneers there. And from what I've heard, they all had a really great time. On November 14th, Heritage welcomed motivational speaker Sean Derrick to the school. He spoke to students about the importance of avoiding drugs, alcohol, and tobacco. He also emphasized to students how to recognize mental health struggles in yourself and others and goal-setting strategies for a bright future. Everyone that I talked to who attended this assembly was very motivated by it and they had a lot of good things to say. French students in Mrs. Dodgian's French class celebrated All Saints' Day by participating in an interactive and well-designed lesson. Students had to work together to gather clues in a digital escape room to learn about a famous French individual. Finally, on November 8th, our Beacon of Hope hosted an event called Art for Achievement. Heritage Art Students donated their artwork for the silent auction. And to my knowledge, we raised a good amount of money for our Beacon of Hope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. So we have had an incredibly eventful month at EC Glass. I would first like to shout out our wonderful varsity cheerleaders who have helped cheer on our Hilltoppers to an incredible season. I would also like to shout out our wonderful mascot, Rami, who has not only showed up to each and every game, but has also participated in every single student night we've had, such as Pink Night, Neon Night. And we're very lucky to have Rami. Congratulations to our wonderful football team who have taken on the title of Region 4D champs. On November 26th, they took on Salem and won thirty-five to twenty-one to win this title. Congratulations to our theater, who from November 17th through the 19th, put on their production of Pride and Prejudice. Our Hilltopper marching band closed out their very successful season on November 5th in Lexington, North Carolina, at the North Davidson High School Marching Band Competition. They not only took first place in every single caption, but they also won Class 3A champs and second place over the entire competition. On November 3rd, our senior sponsors hosted our annual Senior Bonfire for the class of 2023. Here, our sponsors got to hang out with their other classmates of the graduating class, as well as eat cotton candy, have pizza, dance, and make smores with the bonfire. We would like to shout out our wonderful Hilltoppers who are out in the community doing community service. Our men's basketball team helped out serving veterans at Golden Corral this month. And our key club also helped out at the Turkey Trot on Thanksgiving morning. Thank you so much.
Thank both of you for your presentations. And of course, this closes out the year of 2022, in a sense, for your presentations. And we're looking forward to what you will share in 2023. And Dr. Edwards, I'm sure that all of us would say the same thing. It is wonderful to see the elementary, middle, and high school students performing this way. And even though Senator Warner and Kane are safe for now and those who will immediately follow them, but they got a runoff election in Georgia. We've got some powerful folk here to go into major positions. Let's give all of these young people a grip. All right, so we've learned from our students, which is so important. And at this time, we will now go into our very important financial report for the October period. Dr. Edwards?
Absolutely. So as you said, just thanking the students again. And before my two ladies leave, I did get the importance of theater and arts and everything else in our budget as we develop our budget and just supporting of all of the things that you did. And what I also saw up there was commitment to service. So, don't want to miss that. So from elementary up, you all have done a great job of enlightening us as to what's important in a child's life. So thank you, guys.
Well, well, well done.
All right, to the budget.
Happy holidays to you all as well.
So the October report, which is on our board agenda, I am going to turn it over to Ms. Kapazi for a quick summary of October 2022.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So at the top of this report, you can see revenue and expenditure summary. It is a year-to-year comparison for the month of October in 2021 and then in 2022. You can see that we are about similar to last year. Revenue received is about twenty-nine percent versus twenty-seven percent last year. Twenty-seven percent on the expenditures, including encumbrances for both years. And overall, eighty-six percent this year versus eighty-four percent last year. Health insurance reserve remains unchanged. The health insurance summary comparison from last month to this month, it is favorable as far as if you look at our monthly total. Yes, it is in the red, but it is in the red by sixty-one thousand dollars. It does still take our overall deficit to one point four million. So that is definitely something that we have to start addressing come January. Our year comparison to last year does not take into account the fact that they started last year with a fund balance in order to get a real comparison. So we are at one point four this year, whereas at this time, last year, we were at one point one. So just for comparison's sake, we'll be taking a deeper dive into that to see whether it was the dispersments or the receipts that was benefiting us or hurting us. Health insurance summary, as I said, you know, at the bottom, twenty-one in comparison to twenty-two, you can see we are twenty-four percent higher in our deficit than last year. Attached is the revenue report and the expenditure report. We changed the format a little bit. It is the same information that you are used to seeing. We just added in a couple other columns, being the percent of the budget used for the actual expenditures, which are the transactions, and then for the encumbrances. So that's what those budget use percentages are on the expenditures. On the revenue side, same thing, same general format as for the expenditures. Does anybody have any questions on those new formats?
All right, so you see the format before you. And board members, are there any questions for Dr. Day?
Yeah, back to the original, the part that was in the minutes with the finance report. Just to explain to me where all these numbers are coming from, the percentages that you report for revenue received to date, expenditures, and then expenditures including encumbrances seem to be based on two different base amounts?
Yes, the base amount for 2021 was our budget in 2021. And then for this year's twenty.
No, 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 I'm not comparing, I'm just October 22.
Yes.
The expenditures including encumbrances, that percentage is based on, looks to me like a total of about almost a hundred and nine million, where the other two, revenue received and expenditures to date, are based on an amount that's our approved budget, which is a hundred and six thousand million.
They should all be based on the hundred and six, but I will recheck the math in the spreadsheet.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Further questions? Dr. Gupta and then Dr. Brennan. Go ahead, Dr. Gupta. Where Dr. Gupta, he dialed into you and then Dr. Brennan.
Just as a technical question, when you have an account running in deficit, how do you write checks? Do you have an ancillary account to fund those deficit dispersments? Or in particular, for health insurance? So we have one point four million dollars down. Where is the payment coming from?
So I see what you're saying. The fact that the receipts go to a different spot than where the dispersments are being paid from. If we have to right now, we will run in the red because we're looking at the overall budget. And exactly as we did last year where we used leftover fund balance to pay that deficit, that's sort of what we're going to end up doing right now. I can't tell you exactly if we're running in the red or if we're pulling it from other accounts.
It's like one point four million dollars. So which bucket do we dip into to take that cash out?
I don't know that right now off the top of my head. I can look into that and get back to you.
Very good question.
Thanks very much for adjusting the format one more time. This is version number three. We appreciate you doing that and we'll see what board members think about whether it's effective or not. A question regarding the financial report. Did we not have any encumbrances for this year to carry over on the revenue statement on the last page? For 2023, twenty-two, twenty-three, we have a regional budget of a hundred and six million, three twelve. Prior year's encumbrances, we don't have any from carryover.
That's part of what the accountant does in the ACFR. And we just got that number, so we did not report the rollover encumbrances on this.
Okay, but there will be, there are encumbrances, we did carry.
Yes.
Great, thanks. And then as far as the health insurance goes, we've talked about this before, but maybe you all could bring us up to date on the idea of looking at our health insurance plan because we keep ending up in the deficit and we want to keep working on that. And how are we going to do that in the long run? Not immediately, but how do we change this direction of things?
So I'm going to defer to Dr. Wodka on that only because he and I spoke and then he had a conversation with the city who's part of this.
Sure.
Right, so our existing health insurance program was just resigned, I think, last year. So that relationship extends at least until December 31st, 2024. And there are potential other additional extensions. And so if we wanted to make a change, that would need to be done as far as the plan design. That would need to be done prior to the next request for proposals. If we wanted to make a significant change, we wouldn't extend. We would probably just do another RFP for services. So, you know, we can, we could potentially think about the percentages that the employer pays versus the employee and things like that. But that's sort of where we are in plan design.
So I guess what I'm asking is, should we have a plan to look into this in the future as far as the structure of the health plan, to plan ahead? Because we know for the last two years, it's been a downhill slide. And again, I'm not talking about premiums necessarily, but about the structure of the plan, what the co-pays are, what that a pocket is, and making sure that they are competitive and appropriate for our employees, but also allows our health plan to be viable.
So absolutely, we should do that. As I recall from my time at the city, I think that's usually done eight to six to eight months before the end of the program. So we're probably looking at about eighteen months from now before we are really doing that. But we could certainly consider that, you know, make some plans before that. But we'll actually go through the process in about eighteen months.
And just to add to what you're saying, historically, at least for the last couple of years, what we have been doing, because we, one year, we didn't run a deficit. That was a great year. It was only one. But what we historically have been doing is increasing the employer share, right? So we added ten percent to our budget to cover any deficits two years ago. And then last year, we added another ten percent to our budget. So even though what you see is one point four in deficit, that's after, on the employer side, we've already increased our contribution by ten percent and then another ten percent. So what I hear you saying, Dr. Brennan, is, you know, even our adjustments aren't hitting the mark here. And we're either going to have to continue to increase the employer portion or look for other ways that we can have some savings through co-pays or changes thereof. But exploring that, and just for the general public, because they may not understand that our fiscal year and our health insurance year are two different years. So health insurance, our folks would have enrolled in October, am I looking out okay? Would enroll in October for effect in January. But our fiscal year, we start everything in July. So if we are thinking we want to make a change in January twenty-three, I'm sorry, twenty-four, or in January twenty-five, we really are thinking we need to make that change in July, the year prior, so that when we start advertising, these are your options, we're advertising the options with the change. So to Dr. Brennan's point, yes, we will explore different options to say, here's a way that we can, you know, have some savings. But at no means do we want to sort of give our staff an increase in salary and then turn around and take the increase back in health insurance. So we are not saying that, right? We are just looking for some balance.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta.
That's what I was going to say. It's very easy, and I've been on the receiving end for an employer, to trim down or cut out what they call a fat from a plan. But we got to understand, we don't pay our employees six-figure salaries. So what you're doing is you're taking it from one hand, which is they'll be paying more deductibles. They'll be paying more for their drugs. They'll be paying more for their healthcare day-to-day costs. And on top of that, our raises will be flat. So as you start as an employee, and I'm not trying to start trouble, it's just that's a fact of life. You start the next year in deficit, below what you were starting the previous year. So if you're not making six, seven-figure salaries, that's the reality of life. So we have to keep that in mind, but we need to look for alternate solutions. And I suggested that before. Council of Independent Colleges of Virginia have a consortium where they distribute risk among different private colleges. Because in old days, small private schools have difficult time ensuring that the premiums don't go up fifteen, twenty percent each year. So you have young folks in one private school and the old folks in the other school, they distribute the risk. So have we explored consortium of our Bedford County, Campbell, Appomattox? You know, we've got a sturdy regional alliance we can build. And alliances insurance company bow down to. Volume is what drives the business in healthcare. So maybe exploring, building a consortium of cities, counties, and school districts. So we have a volume and we buy this product in volume instead of trimming down and cutting benefits, which are the, in my mind, one of the prime attraction. Mr. Lakeisha Stewart will kill me for, right? That's attracting new employees to LCS. And you don't want to cut that out. Dr. Wodka, I'm looking at you or Ms. Kapazi or Dr. Edwards.
Dr. Gupta, your point is well-taken. And I think the resolve of this board across the years has been to honor what you have said and to continue that shining star attraction that we have in terms of the benefits. And so very well said, and I know that we will continue to do what we need to do in that regard. Any further questions from? All right, then the October report will stand as it is. Thank you for your excellent questions. We are on top of what we're doing with our finances and seeking to make everything work in the best way possible. Now come to the consent agenda section of our meeting. And where we have consensus, it is our tradition to move along with that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight?
Move that we approve the consent agenda for tonight?
A second.
Motion by Dr. Pata, seconded by Dr. Brennan. Any further questions or discussion on the motion? Dr. Day?
I do have a question just to help me understand the human resources report.
That was added.
Yeah, well, there was an addendum that was added, right. Just in the column that lists experience, there's a notation LV five, comma, two. What does that mean?
The level.
Level?
Yes, the level, the pay level.
Oh, it's a paid level. Okay, all right.
Very good, Dr. Day. Any further questions on?
And then just so you know as well, Valerie Grant under resignation. She is a retired teacher that came back to support us part-time until we found a qualified applicant for math. until we found, until we found a qualified applicant for math at Dunbar.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Director Scott. Dr. Gupta?
You know, I don't want to jinx you, but things are going in the right direction. For, for the last few months, we are seeing more nominations than we are seeing resignations. That means people are loving LCS and the love is all over the place.
Well, I like the way you said that.
It shows up in this spreadsheet.
Thank you.
Very nice to say. Any further questions or discussion on the move to approve the consent agenda? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
School Board Member, Ms. Preston?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Tross?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to now go into Section G, the School Board Member Reports. And I'm going to call out each. If you have no report, then just state. So Dr. Senna obviously is not here. Is there a member of the Finance Facilities Committee who would like to share anything? I know that the meeting and doing very good detailed work in that area. We're pleased with that.
So on your table, you'll see an agenda item for tomorrow and.
For the governor's school.
For the governor's school.
Oh, we moved to the governor's.
I'm sorry. I thought you were pointing at me to see.
Very good. Before we go to you, we are all clear. Dr. Senna is doing an excellent job with that and the committee members. All right, Dr. Gupta, the floor is yours.
So for governor's school, the package we received from Dr. Smith is on your docket right there.
Wow.
Dr. Day will be representing LCS tomorrow. If you see any questions, feel free to contact him. And he'll take all the bullets for us tomorrow.
Dr. Gupta, thank, thank you for your diligent work. This is very important. All of us across the time have really spoken about this. And so you've got the information in front of you and you've got any questions, Dr. Gupta, letting us know, Dr. Day will serve us for tomorrow's meeting. Thank you so much. All right, Law Regional School Committee, Dr. Carter.
I can start with STEM. Is that the, or is it Laurel first? Well, Laurel is, we're having our meeting tomorrow.
Wonderful.
So I'll report back in January.
Okay. All right, and STEM?
STEM, we just had a meeting last, in fact, the fifteenth of November. And the fall semester is going well. Juniors are transitioning from high school to college with the assistance of the College Success Skills Class. The seniors are working on their postgraduate career plans, applying to colleges, and meeting with the CVCC counselors. And right now, they're about thirty percent of those of the STEM students that plan to continue with CVCC. There were twenty-three volunteers from businesses, industries, K through twelve, and higher education that volunteered to do mock interviews with the students, the, the twelfth grade students. Now they're starting their internships, and there's one at Liberty University School of Aeronautics. And that, that student has obtained his aviator's license. Several, there are twelve students now in the healthcare program. And there are also promotional events that you can learn more about the STEM, STEM Academy. And that's the, and one is December the ninth, that's Friday, CBC Counselors Information Session. That's going to be in person, and you can hear all about CVCC and the STEM. And they're inviting the school counselors from the local districts to come. There's the STEM Academy Information Session, February the first, two thousand twenty-three, at six o'clock. And they're also going to visit local schools, Appomattox, they did that already November the twenty-eighth, Brookville, December the seventh, Stan River, December the eighth, Jefferson Forest, December the thirteenth, and Rustburg, December the fifteenth. And you can also look and see their application process. So they're really into doing internships, which is an awesome way to learn whether or not that's what you really want to get into instead of doing four years and then finding out it's not for you. So that's for the STEM Academy.
Dr. Carter, we appreciate your report. That's a really informative, insightful report. Any questions regarding what you heard? Grateful for that. And Dr. Carter, you are starting tonight this third committee in which you will share and ask legislative advocacy and community relations.
The Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations Committee, we met on November the twenty-second. Dr. Day and Attorney Tross and I and Dr. Gupta. And we're also looking at, we did our agenda for the breakfast this Friday. And we asked that everybody please, that you attend if you were given the invitation. And we're, this is an opportunity for us to meet with our legislators and to really go over our legislative priorities. And Dr. Senna is going to talk about the profile of Lynchburg City School Student, Mr. Andrews, the early childhood education, and Dr. Day's student success. And also Attorney Tross will talk about teacher recruitment and retention. And Dr. Brennan, community engagement and advocacy. And we also have Dr. Edwards, who will talk about the reset and refresh. So we want to share what we're doing, why we have selected those priorities, and then also ask their help to pay our way green for our students to do what they need to do.
I'm very proud of this functional committee that's aligning its work with our comprehensive plan, teaching plan vision, and all of the things that we have said are important to us. And so we look forward to that. Dr. Carter, they gonna have any bacon at the breakfast? Turkey bacon, okay. So thank you for that, and that's going to be very powerful. I know it will be. All right, number six, item six, Partners in Education. And I cannot tell you how impressive Dr. Wodeka and Dr. Edwards and all of those, let me not say anymore. Mrs. Preston, would you like to say something about the Partners in Education?
There's nothing new to report, other than I think many of us attended the breakfast.
Yes.
And obviously, one of our board members did an excellent job as far as, as that's concerned, Dr. Senna. But I thank all of you for, for being there. I think it was very supportive of the Partners in Education and gave us an opportunity to communicate with the community or community the impact that, that our Partners in Education has with our students. And I think that that's problematic in our area, that lots, lots of good things are going on, but we don't always know what they are. And so that was, that was really great. And, and obviously, our superintendent did a wonderful address, as did our, our. Chief, our chief speaker for that, for that morning. So it was a great event.
Yeah, I want, and Dr. Gupta, I'm coming right to you, I want us to not, you know, take thirty seconds to appreciate that. Around this table, Dr. Brennan, we've had very interesting conversations during COVID that none of us asked for. And I think that we managed in an excellent way. And to see that and to see the excellence, I mean, I use hyperbole sometimes, I do know that. But you couldn't find the word to characterize how good those presentations were in the clarity. Dr. Gupta?
You used all my adjectives.
Oh, wow. It really was. Let's give that a hand, Ethel Reeves and all of them. And we build from there, right? All right, last committee, the Beacon of Hope, Mr. Andrews and Mrs. Preston.
We forgot the Ed.
I'm so sorry. I can do that. You all forgive me.
That's okay.
And I did not mean to do that. Mr. Tross, go right ahead.
Well, we were so excited to have a meeting November twenty-ninth. And welcome, Miss, Montwise is the new executive director. But one of our, one of our meeting participants took ill, so we had to reschedule that meeting. So we're in the works of doing it, but we're looking forward to doing it. I apologize that we were not able to have that meeting.
Okay, well, thank you. That's also very important. And some of you probably have already met the new executive, but I certainly would be delighted if she can come to the board at one, at some point outside of their regular schedule, just so that we can say hi. Dr. Edwards, I know you know how to make that happen. All right, number eight, Beacon of Hope. Thank you, Mr. Tross. Mr. Andrews and Mrs. Preston.
So Beacon of Hope is working. On October twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth, March the ninth, Tom LCS and Beacon of Hope had hosted a Virginia College Application Week, this incredible joint project among Beacon of Hope Future Centers, LCS School Counselors, and then the State Council for Higher Education. And our local colleges made college accessible and obtainable for hundreds of LCS students, which is amazing. So, and of course, the week of November, November the fourteenth through the eighteenth, Beacon of Hope and a delegation of students and partners from Lynchburg headed to DC to meet with the national leaders in the movement of promised scholarship programs and some other VIPs. So they met with the president, first lady, which I actually think is pretty cool. And of course, as we move into the new year, Lynchburg Beacon of Hope for future centers are working with students for a February fifteenth deadline for a number of scholarships represented in the Lynchburg Common Scholarship Application, including Commonwealth Scholarships to LCS Education Foundation Scholarships and the Dunbar Legacy Scholarship and others. Beacon of Hope is expanding their summer internship program for rising high school juniors and seniors to reach seventy students this year. Last year was their first time doing the internship, and they had an amazing turnout. Applications will be released in January and February, so.
Andrews, that was, that was powerful. For any other questions, Mrs. Preston, that you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you covered it all.
That was, that was very insightful. Everything tonight has been. Dr. Gupta?
I just wanted to bring forth like I've been doing, hopefully Beacon of Hope will expand their membership to include new schools.
So we actually talked about that the other day, about partnering up with University of, Virginia, University of Lynchburg, yep. You all are having some great meetings, I'm telling you. That's good. All right, Madam Clerk, please so note that last statement from Mr. Andrews so that we can follow up on that. All right, at this point, tho, those were wonderful reports. Give everybody a hand for detail. Detail to do all of that, very substantive. Now, I think we can dig in and press a little longer here into Section H with our comprehensive strategic plan. Goal three point three point two update. And Dr. Edwards, you could bring that on for us.
Certainly, that is our placeholder goal for the facility study, so that we just get a regular update on where we are in the process. So I am going to turn it over to Dr. Wodeka.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
At our last meeting, we talked about our educational master planning consultants that we're working with, negotiating terms on that agreement, and I hoped to come and tell you who that was going to be tonight. And we were very close, but I still had a couple of things that I wanted to make sure that we get in the proposal and make sure that all of the terms are the way that we want them to be. So I hope before we even get our, to our next, our next board meeting, we'll be able to share the name of that, that firm and be ready to go. But I do want to share with you a little bit about process and how that will work as we go, as we go ahead. But before we do that, I want to note that our, our staff group is also continuing to work, our city and school system. A joint staff group is working to develop a good understanding of the facility assessment report. So we have city staff and school staff that are going to visit facilities that, in reading the, the facility assessment report that was done previously, just to really get a good understanding so that they can partner with our consultant to help them through that process. They've also done a great job of researching alternative funding options for the, you know, very many projects that we may have coming forward. So we think there's some creative options that are going forward, like potential historic tax credits and things like that that are not typically how we fund things, but are potential options as we go forward that will provide opportunities for us to continue projects going forward. Doing additional data analysis and gathering, as an example, helping to figure out, you know, specifically where our students live so that we can partner with the consultant as we develop conversations about future student assignment realignments and that sort of thing to make sure that we're understanding that whole big process and structure. And so the big part of that is to make sure that after those folks leave town, the consultants, we're able to have that capacity internally so that we can make sure that we can continue to do that work as time goes along. So it's not fifty years between the times we do rezoning. So that will be an opportunity for us to continue to learn as, as we go forward. As far as the process goes with engagement in particular, with the educational master planning consultant is that they will come and first gather lots of information from the school division, learning about our programming that we have now, our performance and assessment, our climate, and that, all the things that go on there. They'll gather that information, integrate that together. We'll also then put together, and they, they use the term fifteen to twenty, key stakeholder groups. So these are parent organizations, they are, of course, LCS leaders or community groups. Lots of, anybody that has any kind of stakeholder impact on public education in Lynchburg, we want to talk to them and have, have a relationship with them, and that will be done both virtually and in person. Other educational institutions, of course, there will be two additional open virtual conversations for the entire community to be, to be a part of, as well as onsite engagements as well, and of course, a web survey. So there will be lots of engagement opportunities. That's, that's already been defined in the scope of work as we think about where we go. That will, that information will then be integrated with our educational work that we have coming forward. And then that information will be used to develop some options for where we're going. As far as our facilities, that the school board will continue, and hopefully, we'll have that ready hopefully midsummer, which is consistent with our original plan, even though we're sort of slightly different than in process. So hopefully, when we come back again, we'll have that, have that, have already told you what that firm is and who that's going to be. But we want to again make sure that we had all the details just right before we, we sign that agreement. So happy to take any questions you might have.
All right, I see Dr. Carter first. Go right ahead.
I was reading regarding the new school construction grant that was, should roll out early two thousand twenty-three. Half a billion dollars for new competitive grants. Would that help us?
Is that in the infrastructure bill or is it?
I'm not sure. It's, I'm not, it doesn't say a name, but it talks about half a billion dollars for new competitive grants, specifically for school construction renovation and upgrades to school buildings.
Great. Yeah, so if you could send that to me, that'd be great. The other, the other thing we're, we're looking at right now is there's a school energy improvement that's another half billion dollars in the infrastructure bill that came out. So we're going to consider some opportunities to apply for grants there as well, so, yeah, great.
Dr. Gupta?
You mentioned staff and the city group. How many members is it? Are they collecting information from people from different schools or is it still very at the level?
I think, I think probably in total, Amy, I think we probably have about fifteen people, I think. Between the city and the, and the schools, they're going on a meeting with principals and other staff members to hear what they have to say. And of course, a big part of that will also be in the consultant's work as well.
Dr. Day?
So you mentioned there were, I think you said fifteen to twenty groups that they will want to meet with once they're in place. Are we one of those groups?
Well, I guess so. Yeah, I think that's, yeah, absolutely, no.
That wasn't necessarily a request.
You absolutely, a school board, I'm sorry. The school board is a, is a hugely important part of this process, absolutely.
Wasn't looking to have my.
Forgive, forgive me on that, yeah.
And there are about twenty, twenty of us on the group, just on the invitation. There are about twenty.
Twenty folks.
Very good. Mr. Tross?
I'm sorry, Mr. Day.
That's okay. Dr. Wodeka, as one of your stakeholders, could you make sure you touch base with Derek Brown on some of his ideas with respect to, he's, he's got some ideas that he's kind of formulating, addressing behavioral issues. And I just want to make sure that his ideas maybe have a place in that facility study.
Absolutely.
They will.
Fantastic. I think it's really, really nice ideas that he's developing, but we're going to need some help on the facility side.
Absolutely, for sure. Thanks.
That was very pertinent, very, very, very nice to say it, Mr. Tross. Any other questions for Dr. Wodeka? All right, we will continue to be updated on that because that has mammoth implications for the future of our kids. All right, if you all, if the pleasure of the board, I'd like to go ahead and accomplish Section I, unfinished business review of the policy BCEZ, which is going to be about our school board committees. And Dr. Edwards, if you could cue us up on that, and then we, and this is an action item.
Yes, this is actually an easy one. It was one that we discussed last time. And it's just a name change to make sure that in the policy on committees, the LACRA committee is named in the policy, Community Relations and Legislative Advocacy. And you asked that, we just switched that around so it matches the actual acronym we use, LACRA. So that's the change that you'll see in the policy, where we'll actually Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations.
All right, thank you very much. So you can see clearly here, our three school board committees. This has nothing to do with a board appointees to governor's school and all of that, but this board has three committees. With LACRA being added very recently, we had two standard, standing committees prior to. And so now we've added a third one, and we kept it, and we've kept it, and so we haven't done away with that. So that's an added piece, and I'm, I'm proud of that in this board because I think a lot of great work is coming out of that. As this policy is reviewed in the future, you may discover that there's another committee that needs to be added. Who knows? But for the purposes of now, is there a motion to approve this policy as we've updated it at this time?
I move the approval of the revised policy BCEZ.
Thank you, Dr. Day. The motion was made by Dr. Day, seconded by Mr. Andrews. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, Madam. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
School Board Member Preston?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Tros?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. If it pleases the board, we could take a little five-minute recess and then go right through all of these new business items and superintendent's comments and board comments. All right, thank you. Five-minute break. And our first item tonight will be the high school program of studies for discussion. Dr. Edwards on for Mr. Coleman.
Absolutely. So Mr. Coleman is up at the podium, so I will let him give you a brief overview of the high school programs of studies and some changes.
All right, thank you, Dr. Edwards, and good evening to the board. I'd like to first start by thanking Maria Jaeger, who serves as one of our instructional supervisors, for all of the work that she's put into convening our school counselors and administrators who met during our scheduled fall meetings to review the entire program of studies and proposed changes that reflect our current opportunities and needs. The high school program of studies, just for the edification of those new to the process or those who might be listening, it provides academic information that helps plan the course of study for each student. The information in the program of studies ranges from course selection options at different academic levels, academic and post-secondary career planning, specialized LCS programs such as Early College, Central Virginia Governor's School, and then the National Collegiate Athletic Association eligibility requirements, as well as information about our STEM Academy. There are exciting course options that are relevant to students' interests and aspirations. It was exciting for me, it was the first time going through this process, to learn all the things we offer. I saw courses like Exploring Language and Culture Through Hip-Hop and a range of world language options in the areas of French and Latin and German, also CTE courses like Business Law and Teachers for Tomorrow classes, which is offered in partnership with the University of Lynchburg to get some of our young people excited about careers and education. Some of the changes that you'll see in the program of studies for this year include the opportunity for students to take AP European History and some math and science course requirements for the STEM Academy and the Mechatronics Engineering Specialty and Biotechnology Health Science Specialty Programs. Additionally, you will notice changes in prerequisite requirements for some courses, AP Computer Science Principles, for example. By eliminating prerequisites that unnecessarily preclude students from participation, we're removing barriers to access that many students might otherwise encounter when exploring course options that may strengthen their GPA, reduce the amount of time and money for obtaining college credits, and inspire their interest in career pathways. We'll continue to explore ways to make higher-weighted and college-credit-bearing courses more accessible to our students, but for now, you see those changes where we've started with that. You see that reflected in green there. At this time, I'll answer any questions that you might have about the program of studies revisions and proposed changes that have been made.
Dr. Gupta?
Go ahead, you rested before.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Dr. Day, go right ahead.
Well, I have several. I'm looking at page eight of the PDF version of it that we were given where you list the advanced courses offered through LCS, and there's a lot of deletions. So I'm wondering what the reasons for the deletions are.
Thank you for that question. So the deletions that you see on page eight, and many of those, as you mentioned, are advanced courses, are deleted due to low participation in those courses.
Low enrollment. Okay, let's see, then let me go, that's page seven, I thought, there's one question I had on the next page. Yeah, at the very bottom of page eight, being removed is some language about requirements to take online courses outside the LCS system. So is there some kind of an approval process? If someone wants to take an online course that's produced by some other institution somewhere and apply it toward LCS, is there a process for them to try to do that?
There is not a, we don't have a process adopted at this time, but what we'd like to do is make sure that students are, if there are, there's prior approval given, but at this time, we don't have a process in place.
Okay.
What we want to do is discourage students from, and families, from going to even potentially proprietary organizations, going through these courses, and then they don't translate or align to our.
Yes, right, right. Okay, all right, so I have another one here, if I can find it. Oh, on page, this is page 35, there's a course, Physical Education 9 and Health and Family Living 9, and then there's the new language in green near the bottom of that. And the note that I have to myself, as I found the wording unclear, says, "Virtual Academy utilizes Virtual Virginia's Health and PE 9 course. This course in Virtual Virginia does not separate out Health into a separate semester. Therefore, students are taking Health and PE concurrently." And that wasn't clear to me, what that means, separating out, what is that talking about?
So Health and PE is, so they're taking that course, they're earning credit for that course at the same time, so it's not segmented into two separate courses.
And in, excuse me, in our base schools, they're broken out so that students that are participating in Physical Education 10 and Health 10, they take a semester of Physical Education and a semester.
So they can take them one at a time?
Correct, they're taking them one at a time. Virtual Virginia, Virtual Academy students are taking them simultaneously because they are not broken out, virtually, they are not broken out as separate courses. They are one course, so they are taking them at the same time.
So is this course one in which they're taking them concurrently? That's the idea here? If you take this course, you're getting both of those concurrently. If you're taking a different course somewhere else, you're getting credit for them separately.
I think that if you look at Virtual Virginia, their Health and PE curriculum are integrated. So if you were someone who said, well, I want to opt out of the Health curriculum, and you're in the base school, you may be able to say, well, all of the Health curriculum is taught in quarter three for you, right? Whereas it may be intermittent throughout the Virtual Virginia curriculum and not just during these certain weeks is when we're going to teach Health.
Okay, okay. So if they take this course, you can't split it up and this part is the Health, this part is the?
Correct.
It's one course through Virtual Virginia.
Okay.
It's their Health and PE, and it's not, it is combined, so they don't have a.
There's no way to break it up.
Health course and then a PE course.
Yeah, okay. All right, let's see. And then on page, page 60, at least according to the numbering in the PDF file, this is referring to the STEM Academy, junior year, and let's see, I guess these are listing the typical courses for students in that program. It says Pre-Calculus 1 and 2, and then struck out is, or Applied Calculus 1. So why was that removed?
I don't have my notes at this time for why that was removed, but what we wanted to do is we were looking at some of our course options, and again, is remove unnecessary barriers that might preclude students from participation.
See, my reason for asking is I would think that Applied Calculus 1 would be a more advanced course than Pre-Calculus, and that if a student was taking that, then they shouldn't need to take the Pre-Calculus course.
Yeah, I can get you a more specific answer about what the discussion was when that was proposed.
Okay, all right. And then on page 65, this is talking about the application process for the Governor's School. Second paragraph, the part that's being removed says, "As well as the ability to work independently, selection is competitive." So obviously, the selection is competitive since you're asking for applications, but I would think that it is good to mention to potential applicants that the ability to work independently is something that you're looking for. Maybe there's another way to communicate it to potential applicants, but I would have thought that would be a good thing to leave here.
Yeah, it's a point that I'll note, and certainly a point that we can take back to the committee again. What we'd like to do is to encourage participation and interest in these options, and some might interpret challenging independent learning to suggest that necessary supports that allow students to be successful in that environment might not be available.
Because from what I understand about the Governor's School program is that there's a lot of independent work, that, you know, they do research projects, and it's very project-based. So the ability to work independently is probably pretty much essential to succeed there.
There certainly is a degree of independence that I think students appreciate, and then there's also significant support that's available to students as well.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, again, the point here is to communicate a process in a way that, again, either doesn't discourage or unnecessarily preclude participation.
And that's the end of my questions. Thank you.
And just to go along with that point, just to make sure that our language is equitable, we don't want to give any impression about the need for anybody, like you said, who might need some supports. So when you talk about twice-exceptional students who qualify for the program, that's one of the reasons why we just have to look at how it's worded and how it may be interpreted or misinterpreted as to what does that mean if I'm a student, so.
All right, Mr. Tros?
Well, Dr. Edwards, don't you think that that, what you just spoke about is more the role of a counselor? And I would hope that the counselors are going to students that they think are, you know, potentially able to undergo the rigor of the GOF school, so that I'm not so concerned about the language, and I agree with Dr. Day, that I don't want to put forth, I wouldn't even call misinformation, but maybe not full disclosure, because it is a highly independent studies program, and I don't want people, children, to get into a program and then realize, hey, this is not really what I thought it was. I understand what you're saying about the support, but I think that is the counselor's job to persuade and let the students know that we have that support, not necessarily in this document. So I just want to be careful about not doing full, giving full disclosure to the students and quite frankly, setting them up for failure. I do not want to see these kids go in there, get in over their head, and they say, wait, this is not what I thought it was. And, right, and now, instead of trying to lift them up, we just drove them down further. And I'm really, I want us to be careful with that particular approach, so, but I do have to, go ahead.
And I want us to be clear that by removing language that might discourage interest doesn't mean that we can't inform, to your point, in those conversations with counselors or as parents are exploring. If this is an option that works for them, then it is appropriate at that time to talk about the independent nature and requirements in the program. But we're talking about a document that students and families will look at to make decisions about their possibilities, and so we certainly want to be careful that the language we're talking about and the language we use to talk about those options don't discourage or preclude or communicate that a student wouldn't be successful in that environment. But when they have those conversations with their. that environment. But when they have those conversations with their counselor, when they're visiting the Gov. School to learn more about it, then certainly, that is a time to talk about, here are the expectations for independent learning, here are the expectations for.
I think you're doing, your approach is different than my approach. My approach, because there are a very limited number of spots, is that the counselors, it's upon, behooves the counselors to go out and proactively, proactively identify those students. I don't think we should be waiting for the teachers and the students to be saying, "Hey, I read this brochure, this booklet, and we're interested in that." We need to push back on the counselor, say, you know, "Mr. or Miss Counselor, go identify the students that you think can thrive in this environment," and then, you know. So I think that conversation you're talking about should happen way before a student or a parent or a guardian is looking at this document. So I, my approach, we have the same idea, but I think I'm going to be much more proactive in doing what you want to do, not waiting for this document to do the work for us. Our counselors should be doing the work ahead of time.
Yes, sir. And they are, and they are. I do want to say, and our counselors are, and we don't want to limit the exposure that students get to this opportunity to one source of recruitment, like our counselors. So our counselors are certainly doing that work, but there are certain, I think, to build a program that reflects the...
So if the counselor's doing the work, you don't need to make the change, is what I'm saying. Bottom line. But enough of that. I mean, we're going.
But, but in, you know, just in reference to your comment, I think we also have to recognize that we have a lot of students whose parents are not as knowledgeable as other students' parents might be. And so, we have to be really, and I'm not saying what the language needs to be, but I'm saying that we have to be really careful with the language so that we make sure that it's apparent to the student and to, and to the parent, that I need to ask some questions about this particular thing, because I'm not real sure whether you can do this, can't do this, should do this, would do this. And so, I think it's, you know, there's a fine balance that you have to come up with, and, and I would suggest that I'd rather that we told too much rather than told too little, if you will.
But you made my argument. You, your discussion supports my point that the parents don't know enough to be looking for these things, is why the counselors not to be, need to be proactive.
Oh, no, I'm not suggesting the counselor doesn't need to be proactive, but I'm also suggesting that the parent needs to be as knowledgeable as he or she can be so that he or she knows what questions I need to ask or who it is I need to deal with, because counselors can't go to every single student that may be interested in, able to take this course. And so, the more of us, whoever that is, the more of us that know, the better.
I could go about this all day on this thing.
If I may.
But we got a, we got a few, we have a limited number of spots. The counselors can go to those students, and they need to be doing it. And if they're not doing it, this book is not going to, is not going to do it. The counselors, there's enough, there's a limited number of spots out there that the counselor should be out there proactively seeking, identifying the students that can thrive in the environment. The language, quite frankly, is irrelevant. If the counselor's doing their job, this shouldn't matter. So I hear you, but go ahead.
Dr. Coleman, can I, please? I just want to make sure that everybody gets a chance to share. Mr. Coleman, you want to say?
Yeah, I just, the point is taken. I think bringing it back to the spirit of why the change is being made, there are students who could certainly thrive in, at the Gov. School, and they may require some assistance, either for maybe a hearing impairment. I mean, there could be different reasons why a student would need, would need assistance. And we, being equitable, want to make sure that we're not denying students' access or communicating that they don't have access because assistance is required for them to be successful. And that is why the change is being made. And, and again, it doesn't mean that that person, that student, can't work independently. It means that they might be successful with assistance. And there are many students in our schools that, you know, that that's true for. And that was the point of it. It's certainly not to say that a student who, a student wouldn't be successful if they haven't proven or demonstrated to a counselor that they can work independently, and that the counselor has to go seek them out.
All right, before I call on Dr. Carter, I do want to acknowledge, I like this lively conversation of you. I think it's good. I think all the points have been well taken. And remember, this is discussion tonight, right? Very good. Dr. Carter and then Dr. Gupta.
My, my question, you just talked, mentioned about some of the prerequisites are going to be waived, or not so much waived, but there'd be less. And then just playing, playing the devil's advocate, are those, so will there be students in there that have had those prerequisites versus some that go into a class and don't have them and may not be as prepared? Is there fear of that? Because I think people may be afraid of that.
There, there might be. But what we're doing as we're having these conversations about the value and the role that that prerequisite is playing on, on access, teacher input is going to be important in that. And so, as we continue to look at courses and look at courses that have those prerequisites in place, teacher input to be able to help us identify what are the skills necessary for that student to have to thrive in that course. And so, there, there could potentially be situations where there's a, a content gap or a knowledge gap based on some students who've had that prerequisite and others who haven't. And we want to take that into consideration, but also put an emphasis on student skill and, and look for, if the student has demonstrated mastery in the skill, could they be successful in this course?
And I think for that, we're going to have to have teacher buy-in, because a student could want to do it, but the teacher may see or feel that the student may not be prepared and may make that apparently clear to that student, and even ask, "I don't even know why you're in here." I've heard that before.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Dr. Gupta.
So on page one, what is the reason for taking out the word for seniors enrolled in CTE Academy and at CVCC, and then the line following that?
If you can give me a moment.
Can you repeat that, Dr. Gupta? Where is it?
On page one, there's red, taken out.
It's page three in the PDF.
Page three, page one in the document, but page three on the PDF. The language added is to take AP European History and some, some of the math and science courses. That's a very vague lang, which math, you know, for the STEM Academy and the Mechanotronics Engineering Specialty and Biotechnology Health Specialty. But then taking out the word CTE Academy and CVCC, because to take a course at any college, you've got to be in their database enrolled, otherwise you cannot take a course. So what was the reasoning behind taking that language out?
Can you, this is the change from last, from last year to this year. So in 2022, 23 Program of Studies, we were saying that some of the changes in the 2022, 23 Program of Studies included opportunities for seniors to enroll in the CTE Academy at CVCC. That was new last year, so we were just highlighting some of the changes. That's not new anymore. That's not a change. We, the CTE Academy has been going on for a semester now. Our students have been participating. So that was marked out because that's not a change, something new, in the 23, 24 Program of Studies. Doesn't have anything to do with their ability to enroll in those courses. It's just, we were highlighting changes in the program.
It's not a change of policy. It's just which things are you highlighting?
Right, we just chose to highlight some different things, some, some different changes in the content. And last year, one of those changes was participation in this, in the CTE Academy.
Because what happens is that highlight is, like, the courses we have taken out further out, as Dr. Day was pointing out to that page, where the deletion of courses on page five of the document and seven of the PDF are science and technology. I know they are low enrollment, but they are science and technology. Latin and medical terminology is very popular because the lawyers are after doctors, you know, so you want to learn the language when you are, you know what I'm saying, in terms of real life. So those courses are eliminated. So what, is, is the cost a factor in deleting them, or is just low interest in selling those courses through counselors?
And which specific courses are you talking about?
Like Elementary Latin one with Medical Terminology dual enrollment.
We had zero students enrolled in that program this year.
Computer Systems Technology two, you know, because in the highlight, you're saying they need to take math, science, technology courses, right? That's the highlight. That's, that's what I'm projecting, that the focus will be on technology. But here, I look at mostly humanities courses plus some science courses. And mostly are German, Spanish, US Government, History, Literature, you know, most, the science, math, and technology, the STEM, which was the highlight in that page one. Is it contradictory to what we are saying in page one?
And, and I would say it's not, because those were changes for last year. That, that we were just highlighting some of the changes and opportunities in the 23, 24 Program of Studies. The English and the dual enrollment and the pre-calculus and one and pre-calculus two, those are no longer new changes. Those are, have been in this program of study, so they're not new for next year. So maybe I'm misunderstanding you, but the, the change in that paragraph is just to highlight some, some things that are new in the 23, 24 Program of Studies.
And my last question is, in this document, we collaborate with CVCC and One University in Ledgewood. And I've been saying that, why do we leave out other schools like Liberty, Randolph, Sweetbriar? Have we not reached out to them, or it's just we are waiting for them to reach out to us, to collaborate? I understand transferability of credits, but they are all at the same level, SEC accredited, and LCS is paying for the tuition, right? And so, why not expand the collaboration across, at least? And in the online space right now, you got, you know, we have Virtual Academy parent PTO came today. That space has a lot more volume of courses, which some of these schools will offer. You know what I'm saying, in terms of variety of courses?
We can answer this question, I think, with, with two answers that are both true. One is why these two schools are mentioned, but I think the forward answer is what our willingness is going forward to explore partnerships and make sure that our students have access beyond just these two courses offered at these two universities here. So there, there is a willingness and an interest to do that going forward. These schools that are mentioned here are, are schools that we have partnerships with from them approaching us with these options, and then us entering into an agreement with them to offer, offer that.
And we have had conversations with Randolph and had courses set for dual enrollment. But then in 2020, they changed to the take-two, so it's two courses every seven weeks, and seven weeks doesn't, you know, connect with our nine-week quarter. So we were not able to have dual enrollment classes with Randolph, but we were in conversations with them and had identified some things that we could do. But I do agree with Mr. Coleman that we really are open to having partnerships with other universities.
Because a lot of schools have five-year, five, five-week semesters now. And even instead of CVCC, could we have VCCS, Virginia College Communities? I know Dr. Caps will kill me for saying that, but expanding to other community colleges in Virginia, they offer online virtual classes nowadays, you know, and they're, I have taken those courses myself. They're as good as in-person classes.
Yep. And, and I guess what I want to share is that this, these universities and institutions listed here are not our limitations, that we want to continue to explore options and possibilities for our students to be able to access, access those, those learning opportunities.
Thank you. Dr. Brennan?
So thank you very much for the presentation. I just have a couple of comments and one, one, I think, straightforward question, which is, first of all, I want to reiterate what you said, Mr. Coleman, it's really phenomenal, the number of courses that we provide in our high schools. It really is phenomenal. Everybody should look at those pages of, of different courses, that there's nothing can really compare to that in the city or probably in this region. And I was also pleased to see that the Advanced Placement African American Studies course, which was a pilot course for this year, has now been approved as a full course for next year and will be part of our curriculum, which was Mr. Reed's program that we had students come and talk to us about several months ago. So I was pleased to see that was added. Can you help me with a little bit, there's one, one, two questions. One is, as far as weighted courses go, it looks like the, the weighting covers a lot of courses, particularly ones that are dual enrollment with CVCC, which seem to be very appropriate. I think in the past, there's been concern that weighting of a 5.0 was just with AP courses, and therefore, other courses didn't, didn't receive the same credit, or students couldn't get the same level of credit for doing those courses. Do we now, or have we in the past and continue to do the fact that we weight 5.0 for a variety of courses, including those that are dual enrollment, that are career tech-oriented?
Yes. So that is, it is a conversation that we, that we gave our attention to during the Program of Studies review. I know that there, there's more work for us to do to, to revisit opportunities to, some courses may carry a different weight, or may, or should carry a different weight, and right now, may not be. And so, that's a conversation that we're having right now.
Yeah. And then the question I have, which is, which is relative, minor, and you may need to get back to me, is that for the summer online courses, I, I think it looked like that Economics and Personal Finance was a required course that was given in the summer. On, on page nine of the PDF, it says that each course is available for a fee of $225. So is that a required course, and do students have to pay that, or am I misunderstanding that?
If they take it during, during the summer, there's a fee for it.
Some, some students prefer to take it during the summer so that it allows them to take an additional elective.
I see.
So we do offer it during the school year, and if you take it during the school year, you're not paying for it.
Okay.
But if you are making the choice to take it online during the summer because you want to get ahead, then we do charge that course fee.
That's great. Thank you very much. Very clear. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Dr. Day?
Yeah, I just want to make one final, at least on my part, comment. Going back to the thing that a number of people said, you were talking about counselors being proactive in, in identifying students who belong in this program. You were concerned about maybe underrepresented populations being, having access to this program, and you expressed concern for the situation where maybe the parents don't understand what this program would involve. And you talked about students who maybe want to be in the program, but maybe look like they're not going to succeed. I'm especially concerned for students who ought to be in this program, but maybe perhaps because their parents don't have that kind of background, would not, would not suggest it to them. I think it's important for the teachers, and you may well do this, that do you invite teachers to identify students that might be candidates? I, I've known situations where a student who doesn't believe in themselves, but a teacher identifies them. They could do this, but it would never occur to them on their own to try. I think it's important for student, for teachers to identify those students who could rise above their maybe traditional family expectations and could thrive in this program if enough people expressed, "You can do this, even though you've never considered it before." I think it's important for teachers, especially teachers, I think they see the students' abilities more than the counselors do, to be encouraged to find those students and at least get them to really think about it and tell them, "I think you can do this."
And the other partner that I will just mention that helps us with this, and in introducing students to these opportunities is Beacon of Hope. They work with a myriad of students at all different levels, and they also help us in getting this information out to those non-traditional students, those students that you just mentioned. So we do work together with our teachers and our counselors, but Beacon of Hope is also a great partner that works with us.
So I think that all of you have captured probably the biggest concern we ever have is communication, right? So, Mr. Tros, to your point, counselors should be proactively selecting. This is a book that is given to eighth graders before they even come into high school. So maybe I'm not, as an eighth grader, being proactively selecting yet, but I want to read that and know that that's a possibility for me. So as an individual student, I'm proactively advocating for myself. When I look at the Gov. School thing, I'm an eighth grader, getting ready to be a ninth grader, but that's where I want to be when my junior year happens, and I haven't even met my counselor yet, or perhaps a parent, or perhaps it's a tutor at Jubilee who knows this information. I think what we need to do as the adults and the ones here is to make sure that we open as many doors possible, whether that's counselor advocacy, yes. Whether that's self-advocacy, yes. Parent advocacy, yes. Teacher, I'm advocating for you even if you don't want to do it, yes. And if it's teachers, and community, if it's teachers in the program saying, "Come on in, I'm going to work with you, I'm going to develop your skills and talents," yes. I think we need to say yes to all of those and not put one over the other or one in, in place of another because we want the best for all of our students. We have to recognize that this book, it can open doors for students We have to recognize that this book, it can open doors for students when they're, when they're given it at eighth grade. We could close doors if I read it and I just go, hmm. And for me, I'm not going to be able to get to there. And I think what we want is doors open. And if I need as many voices from my counselors, my staff, from the receiving staff at STEM Academy, Gov. School, CVC, any university, to the teachers, parents, we all need to be encouraging kids to have these high expectations for themselves. We all need to be looking at opportunities to tap into potential that might not show up in an SLOL score, but shows up in classrooms. So I agree with all of you. This is all what we need to do, but I also am very mindful that we do have populations of people who may read something and close the door on themselves and others who might try to help them because I'm not even there yet. So let's make sure we keep the doors open as much as possible, provide that support, but also recognize, yeah, there are prerequisites to doing this. This is rigorous. This is challenging and there's some work to be done. I think we can do it.
We can.
All right. For Mr. Coleman's, is anyone else who wanted to say anything?
On a separate, on page 16 of the PDF, specifically the academic support subgroup of classes. Could you explain to me what those classes are? I think I have an idea, but I want to, I don't want to speculate. I'd like to get just a, from anybody.
I've got to get to the page.
Yeah, I'm getting, trying to get there as well. What's the page number on the actual document?
It's 16 PDF. It is 14 on the document, so.
The SLOL review courses.
It's a, is that what, okay.
Yeah. So students who haven't passed an SLOL when they should have, might be in a review program, those first, one, two, three, four, five.
Oh, yes.
Are these remedial programs or what?
Enrichment or targeted skills.
I'm going to tell you where I'm coming from. I talked to a lot of business leaders out in the community and they are just bombarding me with, we have our high school graduates and high school students, whether they're, you know, these are business owners that have fast food operations, what have you. They say some of our kids that are out of the public school system do not have the basic skillset for math, writing things, that nature. So I don't know if this is the right area to discuss, you know, this issue or not, but I would like to see some kind of classes or remedial program, whether it's focused on capturing some of that lost learning that we've experienced over the past 10 years or whatever, or the pandemic or what have you. Do we have any kind of remedial classes that say, listen, you know, let's step back one step and give you some extra help in math or some reading or writing? I'm sorry?
That's what these.
That, okay, and that's what I was, and then the second, the follow-up to that is, how much do we utilizing counselors or teachers? To me, it's one and the same. The teachers should be telling the counselors, hey, go help this kid with the Gov. School. Teachers should be helping the counselors, this child may need some remedial help to get them some basic skillset to go out and be somewhat successful in the job market. So are we advocating for these type of programs and identifying the children that could really benefit from the remedial or SLOL, whatever you want to call it, I don't care, but remedial programs?
We are, and I think going back to the point that you raised earlier about being proactive, which is my favorite word to ever use, we'll come back in January to talk to you about that we're taking a proactive approach to build students literacy and numeracy skills through the science of reading and integrating numeracy and literacy skills development across all content areas. That is how you proactively elevate the tide that raises our ships.
Bingo.
And so we'll share more information about our work toward that end.
That's, and it's so important, and I'm, I'm not the only one hearing it from business community leaders out there that we need to do that for the good of the city, for the good of everybody, the children, the city, everything. And I did see that you can take these classes repeatedly for credit, which I think is fantastic because the kids, they just need some extra support. Maybe they're not getting it at home. I don't know where. But they need it so they can have the basic skills because unfortunately, we have some children getting out there that don't have the basic skills and it really hampers them and hinders them in life. It's a shame.
This also, I mean, it gets them the basic skills. It's that review, it's that remediation. But this, this is also, we're wanting to get 100% of our students across the stage for graduation. So that's why these students can take it repeatedly because we want them to be successful. We want them to have the skills and we want them to be able to have that verified credit to get that diploma and walk across the stage.
And I don't, I just want to have life skills.
Absolutely.
If they don't have the life skills, they, they have no hope and if they have no hope, they have no future. So great. All right, good. I just want to make sure we're, we're identifying these kids, these children and getting them the help that they, they need and a lot of them are asking for. And I just want to make sure we're there for them, so.
Dr. Gupta?
I think the word is, as you use enrichment instead of remedial.
Richmond.
Remedial is sort of a depressing word in academia.
I don't get tied up in the semantics. I get tied up in making it happen. Don't care, I don't care what you call it. Make it happen.
All right. And I have welcomed us really having a good, solid discussion around this. I think Dr. Edwards used a key word, communication. And first of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Coleman, because you, you've come on board, hit the ground running with excellence in terms of identifying some challenges, being able to help us get through some of those more challenging times. I want to remind this board, even last year, when we had some very interesting discussions around the high school program of studies, Dr. Brennan mentioned one of those courses. Unlike other school divisions, we have not had the chaos here around our studies program. And I think that is large in part because of our administration, because of this board. And I think this discussion, though lengthy, shows the community that each of us care and what you have to say matters. I think Mr. Coleman has heard us, administration has heard us, and we will continue. Now, when, when will this come back before us for actual action, Dr. Edwards?
Next week.
So that's what I wanted to know.
And the reason why it's timely, I'm sorry. I need to point out that it's timely because this document is the document that we're going to use to start scheduling students when we come back in January. So as quickly as we can get it approved, then we can get it printed and distributed to our, our eighth graders and beyond so that they can start registering.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta.
I just wanted to echo our question, should not take our appreciation for what you're doing. There has been a lot of turbulence in the past whenever these programs came on the agenda. And I don't see any turbulence behind you today.
You just jinxed them.
No, I, I welcome the questions and I think that this discussion is also helpful as I work with the team of folks who are helping design what our programs look like. We can bring the points raised from these discussions. I don't work as, as, as an independent agent. I'm a member of this community, working with the team to serve our community. And so I appreciate the questions. I appreciate the input. It gives me the information I need to make sure that what we design reflects the needs and opportunities we should be advocating for.
Dr. Carter would like to say something.
I was just not happy to, I was just happy not to see a complicated formula about how to reach here and here and here. And it would just be too complicated. So I was glad that that wasn't here. That wasn't part. Remember that one?
All right. So board members, what I would suggest that any significant points that you have not articulated, that you tried to communicate there this week and, because this is going to come back before us Tuesday in our work session. Is everybody clear on that?
All right, then I'm going to say one parting comment.
Go ahead.
Don't water things down for the sake of watering things down. I think you do yourself and our school system a disservice by watering things down through language. Don't lower the bar for the sake of lowering the bar. We should expect more of our students. They will rise to the occasion when you expect more of them. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Tros. All right, Mr. Coleman, thank you so very much. We appreciate it. Excellent report and board members, govern yourself accordingly for action on this next Tuesday. J, J2 will now be the LCS Continuity of Services Plan. Dr. Edwards, you could bring that up.
Yes, this is for information and it is a requirement that we have the discussion. And Ms. Pugh is going to talk about the plan for safer, we're already safely returned to in-person, but this is still a requirement.
Yes. So as you all know, in March of 21, we received quite a significant amount, an award in SR3 funds. So that's the ARP SR funds that we received, over $28 million. And those funds have been allocated. That was part of, part of receiving those was developing a plan for safe return to in-person instruction, which as Dr. Edwards said, we have done, and then continuity of services. And also part of that has been that every six months, we have to report back to VDOE on our progress. And we have to update our plan for safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services, which we have done. We have to report back on expenditures and, and, you know, how we've allocated and used those funds. We were required to get input from the community and we have, through various means, early on. We also had posted on our website an email address if people wanted to ask questions or contribute things. We've not gotten any email into that address. We also had a survey that was posted and we, at that, up until a few weeks ago, had not received any input from community, teachers, students, parents, community members. Just a few weeks ago, we received from VDOE, the governor is requiring some additional information that we need to report back by December 30th. And so it's very much detailed in terms of gaining input from our community on the continuity of services plan and how we've allocated and are using those SR funds. So we redesigned the survey. I worked with lots of our internal staff and also some partners outside to help us get the survey out to our constituents. We sent the survey, I, I asked our student representatives to get student input on the survey. We sent them out to parent advisory, personnel advisory. I asked Ms. Reeves to send it out to some of our partners, some faith-based, some, some, like Jubilee and some other organizations. Renee Anderson, who is our coordinator of, of pre-K, she sent it out to some early childhood education providers. So we've gotten quite a bit of feedback, which is great, and we can use that feedback in our report. But I just wanted you to know that this is a process and I'm also going to encourage those who are listening. If you haven't received a link to that survey, it is on our website. And it can be found if you go to www.lcesedu.net. And then it is on the COVID-19 update page because it is related to COVID updates and our continuity of services and instruction due to COVID. So I just wanted to give it to you all as information. Working hand in hand with Kristy Compton, who is our supervisor of grants. And she is working to complete the necessary report back to VDOE by the 15th of December, obviously because it's due to them on the 30th, but we have winter break. So I just wanted you to be aware of this plan and, and the communication that we have had over the past 18 months, almost two years now with VDOE. But there are some additional things that are required of us this time.
Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Pugh. Any questions for this particular matter? All right, for informational purposes at this time. Thank you so very much. We'll now go to J3, which is, everything is important, but this is certainly another very important matter. Our School Resources Officers, MOU, Dr. Edwards, if you could bring us.
Sure, I'll give you the backstory and then Dr. Wodoka will talk about the process. So every two years, we will review our LCS LPD SRO, that's a lot of initials, MOU, which is our memorandum of understanding with the local police department. We did it in 2018 and we put it out for the public comment. We did it again in 2020 and here we are at the end of 2022. So it is up for review just as a two-year review process. And to talk a little bit about what that review process looks like, and we like to get as much feedback and input from all of our stakeholders, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Wodoka to talk about the process.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. As, as, as Dr. Edwards said, this is a very important document that really outlines how we interact and operate with the Lynchburg Police Department. So for any community members watching and for the school board, I do want everyone to know this is a very important piece of information that we do use frequently. Just today, our colleague, Dr. Derek Brown, salted me out and said, hey, I just want to let you know, I say enforced a component of the, of the agreement to make sure that we are interacting with our students in the right way. So this is something that does define how we do our work and we do so in, in hopefully a very positive way for our students. So as we move forward, we'll be soliciting feedback. As you can see, there's a, a link for our community to fill out a feedback form, to kind of give us information on how things are working with the School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding. And we'll also be interacting specifically with certain community groups such as the NAACP and other groups that may have a particular interest and, and have, have been a part of the conversation in the past. So certainly we'll take any questions on that process. And again, please, our community is certainly encouraged to participate in this and provide feedback where necessary.
So once again, this is a huge document and there's no need to try to complain about it, if that's the right word. After this has been approved, if you will, and technically it's between the superintendent and the chief, but every school board, you know, must look at this as we're doing. Nobody wants to be the parent and have a call that your kid is going to school and then ending up in a pipeline somewhere else. So is it anything in this document that anyone wants to speak to at this time? Dr., Mr. Andrews?
So I know the SROs, I know that having SROs in the school system comes down to funding, right? But it would be a good idea to even consider having SROs in elementary schools just because you leave those schools vulnerable. There's 11 schools, obviously. And I know moving forward, facility studies, we're probably going to consolidate some of those schools and/or change some of those schools. But it just, it, it, it does bother me that only middle schools and high schools are subject to SROs. It would be nice to have some type of security presence in those elementary schools also. And maybe that's something that we could talk about during budget time, you know? Or I know there's some grants out there and so forth, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. I mean, that's just, it's just, it's important to me, so.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Well said. Dr. Gupta?
No, I echo your sentiment because, you know, I, my experience with LPD was last night. Somebody knocked on my door at 1:00 in the morning. These guys were there in 30 seconds, very professional, you know? And within 30 minutes, they texted me, they resolved the issue. So these are well-trained for every situation. And we need to utilize the community resource we have as much as we can. So I echo you, you know, we talked about security officers, but if we have trained LPD police officers, that should be our top priority. And I agree with you, leaving elementary schools who are, some of them are in tough neighborhoods. So it's for the safety and security of our kids. It's important if we can expand that SRO program, provided the LPD can provide you the manpower to do it.
Absolutely. And that's just has been our challenge, right? Is that you, you may have read over the weekend in the paper, you know, despite different policy decisions that were made, LPD continues to be understaffed. And so it's, it continues to be a problem. And certainly we, we, we value our partnership with, with our SROs. I think we, I think we have an exceptional model in Lynchburg that we should continue forward with. But again, there, there may be changes to that as well as we go forward.
Could we do Sheriff Department with LPD, you know what I'm saying? Expand that search to, like we use sheriff deputies here.
I, I don't know if that's been explored before, but we can, we can explore that.
All right, Dr. Day, then Dr. Brennan.
Back when we were talking about the grant that was going to fund some new SRO positions. As I recall, one of the questions that was raised, I don't know if by us or someone in the community, was whether the SROs would carry their service weapons with them. And this document doesn't address that at all, that I could find. Is, at the time, I thought you said that that was an issue that had to be worked out. Is this the document where we should see that?
I'm sorry, so, so that, so that grant is about the school security officers or SSOs, which we do have a grant for, which we're advertising or getting very close to being able to advertise for, for those positions now. So that's a little bit different.
So those are SSOs, okay.
So SSOs versus SROs. And that, that, the intent is for those, those folks to be armed. Provided that we have proper training and that sort of thing.
Okay.
Dr. Brennan?
I was just going to bring up the same topic that we have. There, there is funding that, that Lynchburg City Schools has applied for and has received to have the support in the elementary schools. But it really, part of the problem is manpower to fill those spots. So I think we're all concerned about that. LCS has stepped up to help address it.
Mr. Tros?
Dr. Wodoka, what is the policy with respect to rotation of SROs, if there is one? I just, and the reason I'm bringing it up is that it seems like the SROs- And the reason I bring it up is that it seems like the SROs I'm familiar with have really developed a good working relationship with the students. I mean, and they've been, the students seem to have embraced the SROs. And not necessarily from a, you know, it's a police officer standpoint, who just says, hey, this is a confident, this is somebody that can look out and has my back. But I'm curious as to, is there any policy either on the LCS side or LPD side with respect to rotation or when they may, they go on tour of duty for three years? I don't know.
It's a great question. And I agree with your point that there are some really critical folks that have joined our school community and hopefully will continue to be involved in it. I believe the MOU says that the placement is at the discretion of the chief of police, obviously in consultation with us to make sure that that's a good fit and everything else. But I think that, you know, one of the things that we do have to remember is that as individual officers, you know, police officers probably shouldn't be in these roles forever and ever, I mean, just for their own personal career development. And, you know, if most of what they've done is only in the school, you know, they need to have other opportunities. You know, LCS is a learning organization and that's a huge part of it, but they also have to go and learn other things too. And we certainly have some folks, I think there's some specific folks you might be referring to that we value and hopefully that person will continue to be a part of the school community. But I don't think it's a specific time period. I know typically, you know, there's been like a four-year time period as generally, but...
And just to follow up, do the local staff at the, at the schools where the SRO officer works, do they have input in that rotation process along with the SRO officer? I mean, how does that, what's the actual process or does it come from the admin?
Yeah, so it comes from the LPD admin. So, yeah, but absolutely, if, you know, the relationship between the principal and the SRO is absolutely critical. And so if it's not working out, that's a different conversation and, you know, we could continue to have that conversation. But certainly I think, you know, we're looking for a good fit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charles, Dr. Gupta.
I for one do not support any rotation policy if you got, because the EC glass SRO we have is excellent, is part of our family. And last thing I want to do is to think, I think about that the school board is thinking about rotating you out of this place.
So, right, absolutely. So we are certainly not engaged in that. But again, to my, to the point I made earlier, I think for those individuals, it may be, it may be better for their long-term development to do, to have experiences doing other things as well.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for this discussion. Dr. Edwards, in your mind, when do you plan on wanting to be able to sign this along with the chief of police?
We'll collect the comments over the next couple of weeks and then put them together, bring them back to you all for discussion in January, like we did, January, yeah, probably January work session, like we did last time, and just share with you what the community has shared or staff members have shared. There may be some changes or recommendations and depending upon the nature of those, we'll put those in here, share them with the chief, have another conversation. So we're looking at by March, we should definitely have this all wrapped up, if not sooner. Depends on the volume of changes.
All right, thank you. And Dr. Waterco, I feel very good that that community input will be comprehensive and there are people all over the place on this issue and we want to make sure that we hear from everybody. Thank you so much, members of the board and administration. Now we'll go to J four, school roof replacement project.
And that is still Dr. Waterco.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. The capital improvement plan for this present fiscal year includes the replacement of three roofs on our school buildings. Darrington Elementary School, a component of that building. Dunbar Middle School, a smaller component of that building as well, as well as Hutcheson Early Learning Center. So this is, this is something that actually, if you look at school board policy and city procurement rules and that sort of thing, doesn't actually have to come to school, the school board for approval, but that's been done in the past. So we wanted to make sure to bring that to you, just to let you know that's going on. So we weren't, we were sort of being consistent with what we'd done before. But in this process, we did bid this work through the city's procurement division. We only did receive one bid at $343,000, but that's within budget. We, of course, advertised it far and wide and had lots of opportunities for anybody else, pre-bid meetings and that sort of thing, to bid on these projects. And we did also include an alternate for the stairwell and elevator at Dunbar as well. But we did only receive one bid for some reason. I know construction is tight right now, continues to be tight, and so we're seeing that across different other projects as well. We're not getting nearly the number of bids we usually do, but this project is within budget and we feel confident about this company that we have not actually worked with, but we've done some important reference checks as we've gone through the process. So certainly we'll take any questions you might have, but...
Chair recognizes Dr. Gupta. Let me just navigate. The chair recognizes Dr. Gupta first, then Mr. Charles, then the auditor at your hands.
I just wanted to make sure that you need an approval action item from this board or you don't?
This is just informational.
This is informational, okay.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Mr. Charles?
Has a decision been made? I mean, I think that's a good company, but has a decision been made for these guys?
We haven't awarded it yet because I wanted to have this conversation tonight, just in terms of being...
I got, I mean, I don't know. I'll give you another contact that did a roof for me and it was 30% less than anyone else out of Richmond, I don't know, but I don't want to mugger the water.
I think once we've done the procurement, you know, they had the opportunity to do that. We really don't want to do that.
We appreciate that you are so conservative.
Maybe $40,000, I was good for it.
Oh, hallelujah. All right, everybody, let's stay focused. All right, very good, Mr. Charles. All right, further discussion on the school roof replacement project, information tonight. So certainly, Dr. Waterco, I think we've heard and understand what's going on and can move on now. Okay, very good. We will now move to J five, which is the return of fund balance.
Absolutely. So this is coming to you tonight for discussion. It will be probably back on the agenda next week at the work session for approval. We want to have a discussion about fund balance. As you know, we have worked very diligently to make sure that we are good stewards of funds and using funds appropriately. And what you will see here is the fund balance from the previous school year. And then along with that, a request for how we would like to allocate that fund balance or use that fund balance going forward. For our new school board members, this conversation about return of fund balance, we do have an agreement with the city that says that as long as we're using funds for something in our long-term plans that we've already discussed, that that should be okay, but there's a process. So it takes you all two views, two votes, or actually one view, one vote, so two meetings. And then once we're done here, we'll send this over to the city and they also take two meetings to review it and vote on it and ask questions as well. So there is sort of a time constraint on it, if anything, we wanted to do quick, fast and a hurry. But what I would like to do is have Ms. Capazie and Dr. Waterco kind of go over our fund balance, the amount, the percentage of our total budget, and then what those recommended projects are, how we would like to use the money.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Edwards. So as you can see in the agenda item, the return of fund balance for last fiscal year is $1,099,856. That's quite a bit less than what it's been in recent years.
Very good.
And so the school division did a great job of making sure that we're budgeting correctly and getting that number to the most responsible number it possibly can be. So you can see about 1.1% of the operating budget is reflected there. There was a great question by Dr. Brennan about where does that, where did that money come from, right? Is that, is that staff vacancies, is it extra revenue, that sort of thing? And I'll tell you, that's actually a little harder to calculate than we realized it was going to be. And so we need to get some guidance from the auditors on how exactly that's done before I can really fully explain that, but, because it's not just simply this account versus that account, because there's different money spent different ways. But as you can imagine, as we go through the school year with having some vacancies and those sorts of things, it doesn't take very long at, you know, some, our personnel's, of course, 80% or more of our budget, if you have a few vacancies for that to add up over time, even if it's just for a short period of the year with 1,600 employees. So we'll work on that and get you a little bit better explanation of where that came from and how that number is calculated, but it's just, it's a little more complicated than maybe I'm capable of doing at this point. So we want to put forth the ideas of how to spend these funds. You know, when we talk about fund balance, we want to make sure that we're using it for one-time expenditures. So these are not recurring funds. We want to make sure that we're not, you know, putting them towards salaries and those sorts of things because you just can't, you can't expect it to occur next year. And so we have a couple of ideas related to our buildings. The first is the installation of security vestibules in the buildings that don't have them at this time, so Darrington, Hutcheson Early Learning Center, Paul Monroe and Dunbar Middle. So we'd like to install those. The next thing is installation of, completion of structural and building envelope repairs at RS Payne Elementary School. So there's a number of, well, there's lots of leaks in that building, we'll just say, if that's the best way to put it. We're trying to make sure that our buildings are safe and secure and comfortable and making sure that we ensure the integrity of the building envelope of that building, we think is very critical. There's also an exterior cornice that is in danger of sort of falling off the building, which is dangerous, and so we need to have that repair as well as repair some of the interior plaster in that building. So if you've been in the auditorium lately or in the gym, you'll note that there's been some pretty significant water damage. That can be resolved by repairing the masonry throughout the building, but then also inside, repairing, repairing the actual inside of the building. So we think that's very important. We think for the long-term integrity of the building, that will continue to be important. The last thing is the structural analysis and repair. This is something that specifically came from the facilities assessment report on three schools in particular, Heritage Elementary, Lincoln Elementary and Perrymont Elementary. That should be Lincoln Middle School, I believe, actually. I apologize. In the assessment, there were found significant structural cracking in certain locations, and so we need to do a little bit further engineering analysis and make some structural repairs in those buildings in order to address them.
Did you say the correction is that it's Lincoln Middle?
That's right.
Okay.
And certainly we'll take any questions you might have.
Dr. Carter?
I'm happy to see the security vestibules for the, for those schools because, especially with the, how things are now or the possibilities, that we want our attendance clerks to be safe. And what does that look like, though?
So I'm trying to think of a good example. So, you know, at many of our schools, you have a sort of a door and then you have a space and then you have another door to get in.
EC glass.
Yeah, EC glass is one. Edward Hills is one.
Heritage.
Heritage is one. So there's, there's that sort of neutral area that can be, say, fortified a little bit differently. And when we build these security vestibules, they're going to be a little bit different than what we've done in the past, reinforced glass and that sort of thing that hasn't been done elsewhere. But when we talk about the CIP, that will be included in that as well. So these are just spaces that people can come out of the rain, they can be let in, but they're not let into the full building like anybody else would be.
Because right now, RS Payne, last I visited, the attendance clerk is at the top on the second floor, third floor. So that would mean a move to a different...
Yes, ma'am. So RS Payne in particular has funding this year, so we're building that very soon. That, the wall is under construction at a glass manufacturer right now. So that person will move a little bit and be available.
Thank you. Mr. Charles?
There, at Heritage Elementary School, it's been brought to my attention that the teacher's lounge did not have running water. I don't know if that's something we could look into, but certainly in your facility study, you may be looking at that, but I don't know if that's, I don't know the magnitude or scope of that repair, no idea, just that someone brought that to my attention.
Yeah, it's a great question. And so in that space, it was not designed to be a teacher's lounge. And so the space is on a concrete slab and so we can get water there, the trouble is sewer, so taking, taking the water away. And so that's going to be a little bit more of a complicated project than just, just sort of installing it. And the water is in the cafeteria, but a little bit further away. So it's going to take a little bit more work to figure out how to get that done and to do it correctly, so.
Thank you. I know nothing about it, other than it was brought to my attention.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any board members and other board members with a question around the return of the fund balance for these one-time project allocations that have been listed? Dr. Brennan?
I'd just like to make a general comment, this particularly for new board members, so we all understand where this is coming from. So this is a process we go through every year and essentially this is, and help me if I, if I misstate this, Dr. Edwards or Dr. Waterco, that these are funds that are left over from our budget from the previous academic year. So we spend a lot of time designing the budget, regulating the budget, and then the budget is used. And then after the accountants go through it and they audit things up, we end up with a excess amount. And Mrs. Preston and I went to a nice meeting at VSBA where they talked about budgets and one of their issues was you really should know what that fund balance is. And they talk about knowing it on a quarterly basis, because that's you want to know, where did you miss in your, in your previous budget? You know, where did you think you needed money, you didn't need money? And, you know, where should you shift it to someplace else? And I think that's, I hope we're going to look at maybe our next work session as we talk about the budget, where we've been before and where we're coming to. And from the, from the city council point of view, there's two things. One is that in the past, we've had more money than this, which has been very criticized by city council, because we ask for funds and then we give them back, say, three or four million dollars, and that's what they always remember. They don't remember this is a more appropriate piece. The other one is that by law, we have to give the money back to city council. The governing body gets the funds and it's up to them whether we actually get to do this or not. So these are our suggestions to them and usually I think they're pretty reasonable because the recommendations are reasonable, but time will tell, you know, what will happen with the current city government. But I think the idea of our finances and what we're doing as good stewards of what our budget is, to know where the surplus comes from after the year is important for us to know. Yes?
Dr. Brennan, I do want to just address a part of what you're saying, because this return of fund balance takes into account previous year's fund balances. So when we're looking at just what the revenues from last year and what we spent last year, that remaining balance was only $285,000. So you have to take into account, and this is what Dr. Waterco is talking about, as far as those encumbrances come into that calculation, to come up with the 1.099. But as far as being, you know, good stewards, $285,000 is really what we're talking about, about the previous year's budget.
So I don't have any comments about the amount, because I think the amount, whether it's a million or 250,000 is awesome. I just think we know what that process is. You know, if it's carried over the previous year, then we should know that that was part of what the accounting was and what it was this year. So just the process is all I'm asking of, but I think you're exactly right. I think if that's where the budget stands, that's awesome. But we just want to know, where do we start with our budget? We propose it, we do it, and we really have, haven't had much of a chance to look back and see how we ended up doing with the previous budget.
Dr. Gupta?
You know, we all want to be perfect in our forecasting. When I leave the home, I watch the weatherman, whether it'll rain or not, eight o'clock, but it was supposed to rain today, but it didn't rain at noon. Forecasting is done with some reliability. When I see 1%, so I'm assuming Dr. Waterco is saying, it is 99% is within the normal distribution, 1% is in tail. Now, having said that, the thing is that you have savings and you, what you're doing is you're utilizing them for other projects which needed to be done, but were not done because of lack of funding.
Right.
Right? That's the sole thing here. We are not here on a spending spree, trying to go out party in Las Vegas using this million dollars. What we're doing is we, some of those needs did not make the priority list in the last year because of lack of funding, since we were frugal, just like in the roof project, you saved about $100,000 today, right? So you count those savings of the year. What I'm hearing from you is million is a million, but it's not a whole lot of amount. You're not going out there to party with this money. What you're doing is providing, enhancing safety and security for our kids. It's just using the priorities which were on the list before, but didn't make the list because of lack of funding. Am I correct in my assumption?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Dr. Brennan, you also want to say?
I just want to say that, as I said before, I have no concerns about the spending that's recommended, and I think the administration is actually asking us to facilitate this to some degree, that if we decide that we agree with this proposal, that we could maybe do this in action tonight so we could facilitate going to city council more quickly.
If that's, certainly your prerogative, I do want everyone to be comfortable with the recommendation. If you are, that certainly would be, would be nice, but...
And I would just recommend, if it's not time-sensitive, I don't want any board member to feel pressured and/or that you need to do some further investigation on other potential options. But Dr. Brennan's point is very, very well-taken and he did an excellent job of characterizing or describing the process. I would just, with great humility, also within the language that he used, make sure that the board is clear that city council is the appropriating body and we have two governing bodies. Lynchburg City School Board is a governing body and I'm continuously emphasizing to this group to understand that you are a governing body. a governing body. Council is a governing body. They just are the appropriating body for local effort to support schools. Does that make sense? All right. Anybody else on this matter?
Make a motion.
Is that, I made myself clear. The chair is willing to entertain a motion. Dr. Brennan is correct.
No, I'm fine.
I'm going to move on.
Should I make a motion? I like to make a motion to approve the return of fund balance as presented by Dr. Waterka and Mrs. Compozy.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Brennan, seconded by Dr. Carter, that we will approve the recommendation that the local fund, fund balance monies would be appropriated in the appropriate way, at least from our perspective. Any further questions or discussion? Mr. Tross?
I would like to just hear a little bit about the Heritage Elementary School. If that's, it's a feasible, and I don't know. You tell me, is it feasible to have that in this particular list of projects or not? If it's not, it's okay. And I don't know if Dr. Waterka needs a little bit more time.
I'm sorry, which project, Mr. Tross?
In the Heritage Elementary, teacher's lounge water, lack of water issue. I don't know if that would be necessary to get, if you need more time to see if it's even feasible to entertain in this, in this budget, in these projects. And if it's not, I'm okay with that.
I think, I think on that particular project, we need some engineering work.
Okay.
Figure out how to do it. So I wouldn't be comfortable putting a price tag to it.
That's fine. So the timeline, just, it's just not appropriate for this timeline?
And so we can, we can, we, we'll work on it. We'll, we'll, we'll start working on figuring out what that looks like.
Okay.
For, for a future.
Thank you, Mr. Tross. And Dr. Waterka has it in, Madam Clerk, if you could so note that. You know, everything is building. Thank you, Mr. Tross. The other question, discussion on this motion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Ms. Preston?
Approved.
School Board Member, Mr. Tross?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
All right. Thank you, Boyd. You're making some good decisions tonight. Very good. We'll now move item six, the FY 2024, the 2028 capital improvement plan submission. Dr. Edwards for Dr. Waterka.
So fund balance is a short-term capital improvement. This is our long-term capital improvement. And again, keeping with the trend of Dr. Waterka is going to explain our FY 24 and FY 25 through 28.
Thank you again, Dr. Edwards, and this is the last one for me. So on October 27th, the Finance and Facilities Committee reviewed the LCS proposed capital improvement plan submission to the city. That program was submitted to the city based on their timeline, but we wanted to review that with the entire school board, just to make sure you had, if you had any questions or had any thoughts that may, may need to be addressed. We wanted to make sure in this process, we were respectful of the fact that we also have this facility master plan work going on. And so over the next couple of years, the, the projects that we've put forward are projects that we think are critical to the long-term structural stability of our existing buildings. So making sure that they're safe and secure. You know, I like to say that the most important thing we do as a school division is to put really excellent people in front of our students every day, but I think a very important second thing we do, number two thing we do is put them in a safe, secure, healthy environment in our school buildings where we possibly can. And so we do have a number of areas where we do need to work on some structural, as well as building envelope integrity work over the next couple of years, thinking about windows and, you know, caulking and some roofs and all the, all the, all the things that.
Really great stuff.
Really getting, we really get excited about as well. We also have some additional security improvements. The big one there is, is access controls. And so many of our buildings, again, of course, have been around a long time, and so we have different keying systems. We have different security, we have the same security system, but it's, in some cases, aging. And so we'd like to spend some time over the next couple of years, rethinking that access control system so that we have a consistent process. I'm not going to read all these things to you, but you can see we're trying to do basic building things over the next couple of years. And then later in the plan, we start talking about some more significant renovation projects. And that's where we kind of talk about, well, some of those may change depending on the results of our master planning effort as we go forward. We also have investments in athletics in the exterior of our buildings, campuses of our buildings, as well as different, in addition, continuing additions of gymnasiums throughout the division. So without reading every single one of them to you, I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Before I called on Dr. Gupta, who is eager, I do see something in here for Heritage Elementary School. He might be wanting to speak to that. I don't know. Go right ahead.
So as I mentioned in the finance committee meeting, if you look at 25 column, that adds up to about 11.5 million dollars. If you look at the 24 column, that adds up to about 8.2 million dollars. And we know our Heritage High School, as we saw in the presentation today, they are winning championships. They're using that turf more than they need to because they can go out there and beat every team they go out to compete with. So I know when, when you do practice regularly and more than required, it takes a toll on those turfs. So I'm going to repeat my request. Is it possible to move the Heritage High School turf and the track replacement to 24 instead of 25? Because it'll also balance the ask from the city. The city ask right now is 11 million, 11.5 million for 25 and 8.2 million for 24. You see what I'm saying? So moving that about 800,000 will take some out from the higher number of 25 to the lower number of 24.
Certainly, if that's the will of the board, we can certainly do that. And I think, I do think it's important we do those projects at the same time, one way or another. We did move it after our committee meeting from 26 to 25, moved it a year earlier, but.
Tracks are worn out, and I know they're not supposed to be replaced for a year more, but it takes a toll on our kids. You saw the track team winning the prizes today. You saw the football team is out there for a state championship. So we got to provide them the state-of-the-art facility. We don't want their knees to be worn out and get hurt just because the turf is all gone. So is there a way to move it up by year so they have what they need to keep winning for Lynchburg, city of Lynchburg?
All right. Now, Dr. Gupta raises a very good point, in which I could support. I guess, I guess I'm wondering, has the athletic director or football coach acknowledged what you're stating, Dr. Gupta?
They must be on this, otherwise they won't be on the schedule, right?
Well, those, so those are on replacement cycles, but we certainly can, we can ask for it to be done earlier, and we'll see where we get.
All right. But before we move on, how would that happen in relationship to this item?
So, so functionally, I think it's, it's literally just a phone call to the, the CIP team at the city.
Gotcha. All right. Who else has a?
This is almost what you were asking, I think. Is this, is this document binding in some way, or is this just informative for us? Here's, here's what we're planning at this stage?
That's, this is just what we're, what we're planning. This is what we've submitted to the, to, as a request to the city, and then they will do their work. And Don Floyd, our Director of Facilities, is sitting on their CIP development team with the city. So we've, we've had a place at that table for a couple of years. And so this, what will likely happen is our, our CIP won't look like this. It'll look, it'll look something, like something different, right?
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll see what we get. And Don will do a great job of representing us as we go forward. So we'll definitely, definitely ask for that to be moved forward.
Please note Dr. Gupta's concern, Madam Clerk and Dr. Waterka. Any other comments or recommendations, suggestions concerning item six? I know you're tiring, but you still got to give it our best for these last couple of items.
I brought up those tennis court issues before too at Heritage High School, those, the black tar they use to, for those fencing is worn out, you know, it's falling in many places. So is there a replacement plan? Is it cyclical? How does that process work?
Are you talking about the screens on the?
Yeah.
Yeah. We, that's, that wouldn't have to be a CIP thing. We could, we could take a look at that.
Probably small potatoes.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Dr. Carter?
Well, while we are doing wish lists. This is really, around Dunbar Middle School track, there's so many trees and brush that's grown up. You used to be able to look and see the track, but now it's so overgrown.
Which middle school?
Dunbar Middle. If we can really look at that, even coming up the stairs here, there's a lot of trees. If we can get all of that clear, that'll be great.
All right. Thank you all very much. We're going to move on now to J. Seven. Title Four A Federal Grant, Dr. Edwards.
Okay. And this is, we have federal grants, Title Two, Title One, Title Four, that come to the board, and we are informing you of what's in the grant. And we have a short presentation that's attached. And this one will not be Dr. Waterka, who will be talking about this, but rather Mrs. Pugh.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and I will try to be brief. I don't know if, if, if you all have access, you do have access to the presentation?
Yes, we do.
And I just don't know if they're going to bring it up on the screen, but that's okay. We'll get started. So this is an overview of our Title Four A Federal Grant for the 2223 school year. This is the last federal grant that will be coming to you all for information and approval. Title Four, next slide. So Title Four Part A is a grant that supports student academics and student supports for mental health and social emotional learning. It provides students, one of the goals is to provide students with a well-rounded education, and that is sort of under the realm of curriculum and instruction. Another goal is to improve school conditions for learning, and that is called Safe and Healthy, and that falls under Student Services. And then the last piece has some funds allocated to help improve academic achievement and digital literacy for students, and that obviously falls underneath the IT department. So this is a shared grant between these three departments. Next slide. So per the superintendent's memo, you can see there that we will receive an allocation of 295,000, $82.76. This is an increase of 7,975.36 from, cents from the prior school year. So this is just an overview of how we allocate those funds. We do have some portion of the funds that are allocated to staffing. So 0.25 of a division social worker funds is, or a social worker position is funded through Title Four Part A. That is split with some Title One funds, and that social worker serves three elementary schools. There is also a secondary interventionist position that is funded. It is split between CNI and Student Services, so it falls both under the well-rounded student, which is under curriculum and instruction, and it also falls under the safe and healthy student, which is Student Services. This secondary interventionist supports Sandusky Middle School, and they work on social emotional behavior aspects. They support academics. They work with the leadership team on remediation strategies. They look at behavior and attendance and academic data to make, to help make some informed decisions, and they do sit as part of the school leadership team. And then again, you see some other allocations. So part of it is allocated to professional development. 2%, there's a 2% cap for indirect costs, which are things that happen at the division level in terms of managing the grants. We also have equitable participation of private schools. So in all of our federal grants, we are required to give a certain portion of our grant funds to private schools. Some of this will also be used to expand the elementary stream programs. The next one really is, it, it seems different when you look at environmental modifications, that seems like air quality, but that, this is really instructional. So this portion of these funds will go to a multi-pronged strategy to improve conditions for student learning. So some of it will go to flexible classroom design, multisensory learning materials, and then professional development and coaching for these teachers, where we're going to make these, it's two sixth grade pilot classrooms at, one at, at Sandusky Middle School and one at Lincoln Middle School. And then it also does include professional development, as I mentioned. And then the last piece is, again, falls underneath Student Services, and this is providing training and supplies for MANT training, which is the method that we use for seclusion and restraint, as well as youth mental health, health first aid training for all of our staff over the next couple of years, which you've heard about before. And so we are, this is for information, but ultimately, we would be seeking your approval to submit this federal application to VDOE.
That's something we can do tonight. Dr. Gupta, what you say?
I think every year, this material is time-sensitive. We'll make it an action item. I move to make it an action item.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Gupta, seconded by Mr. Tross, that we will approve the grant proposal, federal grant for 202223. Any further questions or discussion? Dr. Day?
You may have said this, and I just was not a line or two behind what you were explaining. On the next to last slide, you talked about equitable participation of private schools. Can you explain to me again what that means?
Yes.
Yep.
So, and this is federal, part of federal law, federal statutes, that, and, and these are federal grants, even though that we are sending this application to our Department of Education in Virginia. It, we are required by law to allocate some of our total funds, so some of the 200 and some thousand dollars, we are required to allocate to the private schools in the city of Lynchburg. So VES, James River Day School.
Do they apply to us?
No.
Or they apply to the state for?
No, they are, they, they receive a certain portion based on their enrollment.
It's automatic?
And we're a fiscal agent, so we get their money.
And then we pass it on?
And then we pass it. They, they then work with us to order their things. So we do the ordering for them and distribution and, and now, in the end, if that school is to, so for instance, like Holy Cross was a school that, a private school that is no longer open, when, if they have received funds, which they will have, and whatever they've purchased when the school is no longer functioning, or then that come, that equipment and everything, anything they've purchased would come back to us at that point in time. But Dr. Edwards is right. We are the fiscal agent, but they, they are to receive their portion of these funds.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, that's another talking point to show collaboration, sometimes mandated or whatever the case may be, but we, we're working together as a.
Absolutely.
Often unnoticed. All right. Any other questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Ms. Preston?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Tross?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Boyd, you've done some great work tonight. We'll now have the superintendent's comments.
Oh, okay. Just a couple quick comments, just to inform the school board that we did a couple meetings ago, months ago, have LEA reps meet with us, and we want to just report out that we did have our first quarterly meeting with transportation reps. Dr. Waterka, myself and Ms. Custer met with, we were scheduled to meet with two transportation reps, but we met with one, and it was a very collaborative meeting. And we have a couple of things in the works in terms of some immediate items that we were already working on since first hearing of some of their concerns, as well as some communication items on both sides, how we're going to work together so that we make sure that all of our employees are well-informed about anything going on in L, in LCS. We are going to schedule our next quarterly meeting with them, so we do plan on having additional meetings. That was part one. Part two was we also had separate from that, a professional development committee. And although they didn't meet yet, I think, Ms. Pugh, you have a meeting date scheduled tomorrow. We're going to meet with the transportation reps to talk about their PD needs as well. And the third thing was as we continue to bring policies related to transportation, we will invite members of the transportation staff to also consult and provide input on those policies. So I just wanted to give you an update that we were actually doing, some of the things that we had shared with you that we would do. Want to give a shout out to Ms. Reeves, Ms. Boyd, and the entire kindergarten kickstart team. We've had several of those. The last two were at Peakland and the Ramp Church. We have one tomorrow that is at V U L Humble Hall. So we're looking forward to meeting with our families. We have registered several kindergarten students already, which is great because you can register on the spot. So families, if you want to get a jump on getting your child registered for kindergarten, come out tomorrow to V U L, and we'd be happy to meet with you. come out tomorrow to VUL, and we'd be happy to meet with you for that. We've had some other wonderful things. I'm not going to repeat too many of them because we've talked about them. I do want to say kudos and shout out to both the parent advisory and personnel advisory committees, which meet with me to give me input on various things. We did talk to them about budget. We did get some input about calendar. We do have a calendar committee. And I'm saying all this committee and team and committee, just to show you the level of collaboration that is going on around the division, that we have multiple groups working on various things. And speaking of multiple groups, we were happy to have a press conference yesterday with our partnership with One Community, One Voice for Ready to Read for our kindergarten students at, the, the conference was at LES, but it's three schools, LES, Sandusky, and Bass Elementary. And we are really focusing on our youngest learners and making sure that they not only love reading, but we provide the supports for them and their families to enjoy reading and work with us as we teach more about reading. Which leads me to one of our lab school grants, which is on reading. So one of our lab schools at LES, proposals is to have a school that is focused on early literacy with reading and the science of reading being that primary structure. It is a small program for, that we're trying to put together that will affect incoming kindergarten. We are working in collaboration with the University of Lynchburg, and we are very, very close now, I think, to submitting something for a planning grant for the VDOE to consider, making what we would say Lincoln would now be another school of innovation, with their innovation focusing on reading. And we continue to work on the middle school project, which is a bigger project because it's all three middle schools. And while at least one of our middle schools is a school of innovation, we do know that that innovation started in the 90s, and we want to make sure that we enhance that and not just create new ones, but also look at existing ones going forward. So a lot of work is done on the reading front initiative. We continue to work on middle school and CTE, more to come on that as well. And I just also want to, she did not say it, but we know that Cameron also participated and represented LCS at the BSBA conference as a student rep. So we are, yes, we're very pleased to say that. I didn't get a chance to see her while we were there. I think she was there on the Wednesday, but she was our student rep for that, so. And then just, we've had a lot of conversation about tutoring, mentoring, and what we can do to support students. And this morning, I had the pleasure of covering for the principal at Desi, so I just went straight there. And you know, school starts at 8:30, but I'm like, whoa, these kids doing here already? They were there for tutoring. Staff members, everybody was all in and working one-on-one with students, using iExcel as their individual learning plans. They had manipulatives, tools. They were talking about, how was your day yesterday, as well as why don't you try this strategy? In the cafeteria, in the library, in classrooms. It was just really nice to see the entire staff committed to this before-school program to help some of our students. And kids were happy. They, it wasn't like, oh, we have to do this. They were excited. They were excited about their learning. They were engaged, and it was just really great to see. So that's just one of the many programs that we have, and that was a before-school program that happened at Desi today. So a highlight of my day.
Dr. Edwards, before we move on, you said so many powerful things, not least of them, the last one. How do we get all of that out? And for example, Dr. Water, who we were talking about, community leaders earlier, do we have a list of all the leaders? And is there some way to get that kind of information to them regularly so they will know? For instance, I'm embarrassed to say, but I didn't know all that great activity was going on before the school even starts. And when people are giving their opinion about what's going on in the schools that they haven't been in in 20 or 30 years, they need to know that there is diligent activity, calculated, aligned activity to help our kids. And if we don't tell that story, and I'm not saying we aren't, I guess I'm saying, is there a way to put that in front of certain people who have a lot to say a lot of the time?
Certainly. I'm so glad you said that because at our work session next, next week, Mr. Coleman and Mrs. Reeves are going to come and talk about mentoring and, and tutoring in LCS. And we would love to put that in front of folks. And we'd love to invite folks to come and work with our students as well.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Want to start our board comments with Mr. Andrews?
I just want to say thank you to the parents. Thank you for not only being present and excited, but concerned and critical. This doesn't happen, this, this doesn't work without them, so thank you. So that's it.
Dr. Day? Dr. Gupta? Dr. Carter?
Just want to say, it takes a lot of courage to come here and to present, and the little ones that came, they did such a fantastic job. You can always see, you can already see their personalities, and it was just amazing to see how just assertive they are and also so, so willing to do it.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Dr. Brennan?
I just want to thank the administration, particularly Dr. Edwards and Dr. Water, and Director Reeves for the kickoff programs for the kindergarten. I think they've been such a great effort. And thank the staff who have come to those to give presentations from the different schools. Thank the school board members who have come to those, but it's such a great start of trying to get enrollment in the, in the kindergarten, and having the ability to enroll now as compared to in the spring is going to be such a big help. So thank you all so much for that work. I had the opportunity with my grandchildren to see Aladdin at Dunbar Middle School, which was just awesome, was so fun. They enjoyed it, and, and I enjoyed it. Pride and Prejudice at EC Glass High School, which was also really great. That theater program is another wonderful program. And then as part of my sort of mentoring and adoptive school, I go to, to Darrington and spend time there. When I was there last week, they had their Blizzard of Book program, which we've talked about before, these books that have been donated to the students. And I went out with the class, and, you know, they had these tables full of books, and the kids had a bag, and you could pick four books from that to take home. And it really was great, and the kids were so excited. It was such a neat program to see in action. So, Ms. Pugh, I know you've been involved with that, but thanks for doing it. And then a little bit more serious note, there was a, a report that was done by J-Larke, which I'm not really sure who J-Larke is, except they're called the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission. It's a government agency, I understand. And they were instructed by the state legislator last year to review the impact of COVID-19 pandemic on the state's kindergarten through K education system. What's been the impact of that? And they've come up with a number of findings, which I will not go through in detail, but several of the ones are that issues of chronic absenteeism and student behavior have been a result of, of the pandemic. Mental health issues among students have been a significant problem. We know that academic achievement has declined, we're all familiar with that. But the two I want to sort of highlight are that, that divisions are facing substantial changes recruiting and retaining qualified teachers. And the example they give is that before the pandemic, there were about 800 vacant teaching positions statewide. This increased to 2,800 vacant teaching positions in October of 2020. They also point out that teacher morale and job satisfaction are lower since the start of the pandemic, and that's based on a number of issues, including challenge in student population, salaries, behavior issues, a lot of things. But we really have a challenge with our students to, to keep that, to keep them, and recruit and to retain them. So they, this government committee is actually making several recommendations, some of which are to provide funding to help with social, emotional resources for students, and they add additional funding to support teachers, including retention bonuses, along with a lot of other things they're going to do. But I bring this to this group because, as we all know, on Friday, we're going to have our night breakfast with the legislators, and I think this would be something to bring up, whoever the appropriate person to discuss this. But this is the state government having a report that says these are things we need to do. So I hope we will be able to do those. And then lastly, as I sat down today, probably Tina left this, but I got this nice little certificate for participating in the VSBA Five Con Run Walk. And I won't say what age group I represented, but I was the fastest person in the age group. And then I said, well, you know what? Somebody else did that, so I broke into Dr. Coleman's little thing, and he got the fastest walker, too, for the 50 to 59 for the walk.
Look at that.
Congratulations to you. I'm sure Dr. Edwards will also.
And that's my first time in eight years participating in that, but I felt the pressure to my left and right. I did participate.
Dr. Coleman will have to tell her, tell her what her rating was, but.
I got the award for the slowest runner.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Coleman.
You're welcome. Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Mr. Tross?
First, Dr. Brennan, thank you for that acknowledgement of that report. I am familiar with that report. Mr. Day brought to my attention as well as we had at the conference. And certainly, I get the opportunity, my job's been done for me with that report and some backup material to speak to our legislators, and it's, it's, everything's on point. They're aware of it. They have legislation out there, and we're just going to appeal to them to help push that legislation through. So thank you for bringing that up. Also want to shout out to Cindy Bapp and the Virtual PTO. And I would invite and encourage all of the PTOs. I love to see that parent involvement come to our school board. So thank you, Cindy, for coming out. We support the PTO organizations. I like to see every school have a PTO organization that's vested in the improvement of their school, the quality of education, the success of their students. So shout out to them. And last thing, I don't know how many people saw Deion Sanders and his speech to his new football team. And I was impressed because, hey, he's a, he, he's a hard-charging man, and he has had great success at Jackson State. I think he's going to bring that success to Colorado, and he doesn't take nonsense from anybody. And in fact, he expects his football players to rise to a certain level. And I would hope that us as a school board and our teachers would expect that our students will rise to that level. Because I know they will if you push them. They will rise to that level if you push them. They can achieve success. And I hope we don't lower the bar, but keep the bar strong and give them the encouragement to raise to the levels that we know that they can raise to. So thank you.
Powerfully said, Mr. Tross. Thank you for your passion.
Go, Deion. He's controversial, but he can make it happen.
Sort of like Mr. Tross.
Yes, ma'am. We don't, no nonsense. We only want winners here, and everybody can be a winner if you push them. Hard work.
Ms. Preston?
No, that was my comment.
I will go back. Thank you, Ms. Preston. I'll go back to Dr. Day?
Yeah, I passed him. Minute ago, but listening to everyone else's comments reminded me of a couple of things that I would like to share. The report that you mentioned, in trying to organize my comments for the legislative breakfast this Friday, what I've done is I've taken that report and have taken most of their action items or critical areas and tried to explain what we are doing here that responds to those specific things. That's, so. So, because I thought that, from, I read that report, and I thought, boy, they've, they've got exactly the same things here that I see locally and that I'm concerned about. So it seemed to me to make a good foundation for. And then the second thing I should say is, I think it was last week, I visited Fort Hill Academy because that's where a lot of the students that we see in the disciplinary hearings end up. So I wanted to see firsthand what goes on over there, and I was really impressed. These are the kids who we have to pull apart from fistfights in the hall. Over there, that is the most quiet, controlled, managed, disciplined environment that I have seen. All the students in every single classroom were quietly at their desks. They weren't throwing lots of paper across the room. They were focused on what was right in front of them. That's hard work to do that. The principal over there has a tremendous job. One of the things she does is make sure that students who've been in conflict at the high school don't come into physical proximity to each other throughout the day. That's a tremendous managerial skill to keep that from happening, but it's the way she keeps those tensions from blowing up. But it's already been said here tonight that that facility is maxed out. We could use another one of those. And I asked the principal, you know, could we just expand Fort Hill? And she basically said no, because then you'd have all, that many more students to keep separate from each other, all in the same place. It would be much better to have a second, physically different location that worked the same way. So I think that's one thing we need to think about with the facilities study is maybe we've got a building somewhere that we decide we don't want to use as an elementary school anymore or something, but we could put Fort Hill Two in, too. So that report highlighted behavioral issues as a problem, and they really are a problem. That seems to be very effective in dealing with those kids, but it's expensive in terms of staffing. Not just enough people, but the right people. That's one thing the principal told me, is not just anyone is going to work as a, as a teacher at Fort Hill. They have to be the right person. And I'm forgetting her name, the principal.
Kathy Vire.
Kathy Vire. She seems to have an uncanny nose for who the right people are. I don't know if you can duplicate Kathy Vire, but maybe she needs an apprentice to be in training or something. Anyway, I was really struck by what I saw there.
Thank you, Dr. Day, and thank you, and each board member, for the schools that you visit. That's a really important issue for us to tackle going forward with expansion of facilities for alternative education. And so thank you, Dr. Day, for that. Well, Section M, we are reminding ourselves as we prepare to close out this year that Friday, we're all going to be there bright and early at 8:30, probably a little bit before, so we'll be there to greet. Thank you, Dr. Carter and your committee, for the fine work that you've done, the clerk and all who've been involved. Then we'll come Tuesday for our budget hearing at 5:00. And then we'll advance into our work session at 6:00. Then you have a break. Don't have to worry about anything during that time period. Spend time with your families. And we'll come back on January the 10th for our meeting at 5:00 PM. At this time in Section N, board, I do want to indicate that, as permitted by the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A1, school board needs to convene a closed meeting to discuss the following, as permitted by the Virginia Code, discussing assignment promotion, demotion, performance, salary, disciplining, or resignation of a specific officer, appointee, or employee. Is there a motion for us to go into a closed meeting?
Are we going to the closed meeting?
Is there a second? Moved by Dr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Brennan. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Ms. Preston?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Tross?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion, Harris, eight to zero.
All right. We're in closed meeting, and if you'd like to grab your meal, you can do that.